I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Fe County meeting to order. It is 2:22. Can we have a roll call?
Yes. Chair Hamilton.
Present.
Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Moreno.
Present.
Commissioner Roy Ball.
He's here. He'll be, I'm sure, in the chambers momentarily.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Garcia.
Present.
You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Today, we have the Pledge of Allegiance by Employees of Growth Management Division, the pledge by Maria Rotunda, the state pledge by Christine Kelso, and Moment of Reflection by Erin Ordigoza.
Please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Mexico State Flag Pledge. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zia symbol of perfect friendship among Let us take time to focus our awareness here in the present moment. I would like to invite you to take a deep breath, allowing gratitude for our lives, for our community, to fill this space and permeate the work that we do today. May we be present with each other, setting a positive intention to listen and communicate with open hearts and minds. Thank you.
We can go on to the agenda. County Manager Miller.
Yes. Madam Chair, just want to make a note on the first page, we have a couple small amendments under Item F, celebrating Santa Fe County's people, towns, and initiatives. We will start that the next BCC meeting.
Yes, thank you.
And then, under Employee Recognitions, I-3, Santa Fe County Employee of the Quarter, it actually should say for the fourth quarter of 2018 awards. So, we'll be actually presenting the awards today for the last quarter of 2018. Also, as you know, Stephanie Scharden-Clark went on to be the TRD's secretary, so Erica Thomas will present items from the Department of Finance. Then, on, and that's the same throughout the agenda, on Page 3, Item D, I'm sorry, 3D6 has been added, and that is 3D6 A, B, and C. Those items were added to the agenda for necessary action items for the special all-male ballot election for the schools. Then, on Page 5, under Matters from the County Manager, we added Item A6, and that is a Discussion and Scheduling of the Annual Site Visit for the Inspection of the Adult and Juvenile Detention Facilities. Then also, under Matters from the Commission, Item 6A1, I just wanted to point out that that should have stated that resolution is brought forward by Commissioner Moreno and Commissioner Hanson. And then, finally, on Page 6, under Matters from the County Attorney, Item 8A5, the real property acquisition discussion was also added to the agenda. Those are the only amendments to the agenda, and those amendments were posted on January 25th at 9:59 a.m.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Manager Miller. In addition, there's been a request because with respect to the resolutions, 6A1 and 2, which you just mentioned, the first of, to move those up in the agenda until after the consent agenda, because there are people in the audience who then need to move on to some other activities. If there are no objections, we'll move that up as well. So, what's the pleasure of the Board with regard to the agenda? Yes, Madam Chair?
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
As amended.
Thank you very much. And the second is as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll move on to Employee Recognitions. Manager Miller.
Do you approve of the minutes? Approval of the minutes?
Well, thank you. I skipped right over the minutes. Next is Approval of the Minutes. I would like to request a small change in the way we've been handling these. I'd like to request that anybody who, with gratitude, reads and reviews the minutes and has any changes, if those could be submitted in writing or as an email or whatever is convenient directly to the recorder, I think that would speed up our process.
I don't know if it can happen, because I don't know if I'll have time, because I read them over the weekend, and it doesn't always, or sometimes it's even...
If you mark up your pages, you could pull the pages and carry them over to her, or have Sarah carry them over to her. So, with regard to the minutes, I'm happy for anybody to recognize, to express that there are changes so that they can be approved or not approved. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Manager, a motion to approve the minutes?
I have changes.
Okay. So, would you, are they editorial, or do any of them require discussion? I suspect they're mostly editorial.
That's mostly what I have.
Right. So, would you approve with editorial changes?
Yes, and with anybody that has any changes to the minutes, if they can please get them to the recorder, and then the recorder can actually change them within the minutes before she gets them turned over to the county clerk. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Employee Recognitions. And thank you for being slow on the uptake, Manager Miller, because I skipped an item, so...
Madam Chair, I think that was actually Tony that noticed that right away. But anyway, just wanted to acknowledge and introduce our new Santa Fe County employees that were hired in the month of December. If any of them are here, I would appreciate they just stand up when I say their name, raise a beer hand for the commission to recognize you. But we do recognize new hires from the previous month. And in December, we had in Human Resources Savannah Martinez, a clerical assistant, and also Greg Schaefer, our new Human Resources Division Director, not new to the county but returned to the county. Then Anna Medina, a cook at Community Services, Vera Trujillo, a satellite office specialist in Community Services. Then, just now, you've just recently met Francesca Archuleta in our Housing as our FSS Ross Coordinator, Felicia Barazza, detention officer in Corrections, Paul Candelaria in life skills worker at a juvenile facility. And then, at our dispatch center, we have Kyla Baca, Kiana Chavez, and Anne Licon Kemper. And then, a new custodian in Public Works, and that's Andrew Abhold, and then Antonio Gomez, an equipment operator in Public Works. So, just like to welcome them to the county.
Do any commissioners have any comments at this point?
Just like to welcome all, Madam Chair, let's welcome all the new employees, because Santa Fe County is actually a great place to work someday if they want to. That's all I have to say. Welcome for the new employees.
He should know. Thank you. Definitely want to welcome all new employees. Look forward to meeting all of you. So, Manager Miller.
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is just recognition of years of service of those county employees who have been here five or more years, and these are recognitions for those employees who hit a significant milestone of five, 10, 15, or 20 years, and this, or even 25 years. But we had several employees over the last month of the course of January that hit that milestone, and I just wanted to go through those employees and recognize them as well. As Commissioner Garcia said, Santa Fe County is a great place to work, and you can tell by the longevity of many employees who stay here not just five years, but 10, 15, 20, or their whole career at Santa Fe County. And we really appreciate that dedication to service for the constituents. In the Housing Department, we have William Baca, or Billy Baca, with five years in Public Safety Corrections, Manuel Valdez. And our own Deputy County Manager, Tony Flores, hit his five-year return anniversary, although I'll note, he's been here probably more like 13, 14 years, just as I have. And in Community Services, Chanel Delgado with five years, Rico Lovato in Information and Technology, or in our IT, he's been here five years as well. In the County Clerk's Office, Manuel Olivas, in reporting and recording. Also, in Housing, Roberta Martinez with a five-year milestone, and Estrella Martinez in the County Clerk's Office with five years, and Ashley Woods in our Dispatch Center with five years. On the 10-year milestone, we have also in the County Manager's Office, but working for the commission, and it's a true testament to staying power when you stay through two commissioners, and that's Julia Valdez, who's been a liaison for two commissioners, and Walter Dashnell in Public Safety and Fire Department with 10 years. And then, on the 15-year anniversary, all of them actually today, on January 29th, in our Public Safety, first in Corrections, Tino Alva, and in, sorry, Electronic Monitoring. And then, the other three in Corrections, Erin Garcia, David, Ida, and Daisy Quintana. So, I just would like to congratulate them on their anniversaries or milestones this month, and thank them for all their service for Santa Fe County.
Thank you to everybody. Commissioner Garcia.
Madam Chair, Manager Miller, thank you for that. Just interesting when you say years of service. I guess my name would actually be on here for 28 years of service. So, everybody that has years of service up here, just be careful, because time flies by. Before you know it, your hair will be white. So, thank you for the years of service that you actually do for Santa Fe County. I've sat in your shoes back in there, and I know what it is to work for the county, and like I said, time does fly by. I'd like to give a couple of shout-outs to individuals that I've worked with personally. Tony, everybody knows Tony. Good job. Estrella, good job, up and coming star, is that's why your name's Estrella, right? Julia Valdez, like as Manager Miller said, dealing with two different commissioners, it's probably very difficult. Good job. And her hair turned white, actually. And Erin Garcia, who's not here, he actually is a good employee for the Public Safety Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so, Manager Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, and the third item, Employee Recognition, is one that we do four times a year, and that is the Santa Fe County Employee of the Quarter. And this is to recognize employees who've made a significant contribution over the last quarter, and during the previous three months. The significant contribution may include providing excellent service to our constituents, developing and implementing new programs that benefit our organization, providing exemplary performance to Santa Fe County and just their daily job performance, demonstrating a willingness to work above and beyond the call of duty, or any other contribution that the nominator believes to be important to recognize. The process for selecting countywide Employee of the Quarter begins with the designated recognition team selecting one individual from their group as the nominated Employee of the Quarter for their group, and then, out of those nominees, one individual is then considered or selected for the countywide Employee of the Quarter Award. So, this past quarter, we had three employees from different groups, and those three employees, one was, the first one, was from Public Safety, Clyde Hill. He's emergency vehicle technician, who's been with the county since January 21st of 2006. Is Clyde here? There he is. Clyde, would you mind coming up front? So, Clyde is being nominated for his dedication and willingness to go above and beyond his job to keep Santa Fe County employees and residents safe. In the recent snowstorm, his dedication was evidenced by the following: snow plowing around 32 fire stations countywide, responding to after-hours calls to repair and prepare all three emergency vehicles for use in the inclement weather, and securing and transporting an air truck to refill breathing apparatus bottles for firefighters for use during their response to house fires. Thought I'd save you the SCBA and just say the breathing apparatus. So, Clyde is the public safety nominee, and thank you, Clyde.
Clyde, you could just sit, sit up front. You could sit in the front row.
You don't get to leave yet. You can just sit in this front row, and then we'll... Then, from Community Services, we have Nathan Manzanares, Development Review Specialist, who's been with the county since August 25th, 2014. Nathan, there's Nathan. Nathan has proved himself to be a leader. He cares about his work and about serving the public. He is always available to assist other staff and gets involved in work, discussions, and decisions. Nathan was tasked with picking up projects that had not been followed through on. He was able to get them back on track and moving forward. In doing so, Nathan had to explain to angry and impatient developers what the status of the project was and what was needed to proceed. He also apologized to them for the delays and setbacks that had occurred, even though they were not his fault. Nathan assured them that he would work with them to get their projects moving ahead, and he has followed through on all that he promised. Thank you, Nathan. And then, our third nominee for Employee of the Quarter is from Support Services. It's Maricela Martinez. She clearly has a fan club. Maricela is a procurement specialist who's been with the county since June 9th, 2003. She's very helpful and knowledgeable, and the go-to member for the purchasing team for many people. Working with IT, Maricela initiated and completed the Purchasing Contract Database. This database not only has the capability to track contracts, but also has the capability to collect performance data for reporting and tracking the current status of all procurements within the county. Maricela also spearheaded a revamping of the Purchasing Division's procedures and processes. That work will ultimately allow the county to transition to an e-procurement system, which will improve efficiency and customer service. Thank you, Maricela. With that, Commissioners, well, first of all, the, all of the nominees receive a certificate of appreciation and acknowledgement as the Employee of the Quarter for their group, and with that, they receive two hours of administrative leave. You will receive letters that you can turn in with your time sheet when you choose to use those. And then, for the individual who receives the overall, who receives the overall Employee of the Quarter for the countywide employee, they receive an additional certificate of appreciation and acknowledgement, along with eight hours of administrative leave that they can use sometime during the next year, and they receive this award that they get to keep and put on their desk or in their office. So, with that, I would like to...
Madam Chair, Ms. Miller, before you actually announce winner, if I could possibly say something?
Certainly.
Just really quick, one of the things that I feel goes for all government employees, that I learned this very, very, very early on working in the zoning department, is actually we were here, we work for the general public out there, and we're actually here to help out anybody that comes in this building from the general public. And I learned that way early on in my tenure as an employee here, and as Manager Miller says, customer appreciation, or working for the customer, which is a taxpayer. I've only worked with a couple of individuals, and I see them both work. I haven't worked with Mr. Hill personally, but I've seen Nathan, and I also see Maricela when you go and ask them for a question. You guys are there, and very helpful, and you actually want to help the individuals out there, and you think outside the box. Nathan, I've actually seen you, which I did a long time ago, is whenever an elderly person comes in and gets a building permit, I have actually have seen you walk downstairs, go get the deed, get the plaque, get the survey, walk for that person, and get it done. And you actually have, you're one of the rising stars in land use, in my opinion, because you actually jumped in there when the code was brand-new, and you actually sat in there and you read the code and figured out how the code needed to work. So, both of you, all three of you are eligible for it. Mr. Hill, like I said, I've never worked with you, but congratulations, you're doing the good job that you guys do for the general public. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Miller?
Okay, then. The drum roll, please. So, for the Employee of the Quarter, for the fourth quarter of 2018, the committee selected Clyde Hill.
Mr. Hill.
I was going to say, Madam Chair, if you would like to ask any of them to comment, and then we'll take a picture with the commission.
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to do, give the opportunity to all three of you. Mr. Hill, perhaps if you wanted to go last, saying something? Yes, just rush right up. Because we all love public speaking, I know.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank everyone in my department, all my supervisors, my director, and all my coworkers. I feel like land use is one of the best departments to work in, and I just want to acknowledge them. Thank you.
Great sentiment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Manager Miller, and staff, what an honor it is to be here today. Thank you to everyone who nominated me for the Employee of the Quarter. A special thank you to everyone in my finance family, Bill Taylor, Stephanie Scharden-Clark, and Annette Baca for nominating me. The county is a great place to work. Everyone within the county is intelligent, hardworking, and great team players. I wouldn't be able to do my job without all my colleagues, and honestly, I can't take any of the credit. Since I started my career 15 years ago, I've always had great mentors that have taught me everything. They generously shared a vast variety of historical, financial, and procurement knowledge regarding the work that I do. And I feel it's important to keep the county, I'm sorry, to, historical knowledge moving within the county to build great resources. And it has been a pleasure being a public servant here at Santa Fe County, and I look forward to an additional 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much. I appreciate this. And I'd like to say thank you to my bosses, Dave and Steve, and everybody in the Fire Department. Every day, I get to work with some of the greatest people in the county and that we have in the County Fire Department, and we all do it as a team. Everybody helps out everybody else, and when one's in trouble, the rest come running. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, Chief Spurley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I know that having worked with Clyde for a number of years, that he would not say much about his own performance, but I did want to let you know that this is a gentleman that works incredibly hard every single day. He does whatever he's asked to do. He'll give you the shirt off of his back, and he gets the job done. And by way of transparency, in this occasion, during the snowstorm of Christmas, or no, I'm sorry, New Year's Eve, January 31st, late in the evening, he drove from Santa Fe to Edgewood because one of our med units had broken down. And through the long drive down there by himself, he managed to get the unit back to Edgewood Station 1. They were not able to repair it because he didn't have the right parts, but he stayed, spent the night at the station, and then, on New Year's Day, he drove back to his office, got the correct part, drove back down to Edgewood, and fixed the ambulance so that the crew would have two ambulances for that day in order to serve the public. And that's just not unusual for the work that Mr. Hill does and all of our emergency technicians do on a daily basis. So, I very much appreciate the work that he does and the recognition that he received, and I thank you all very much for recognizing Mr. Hill.
Thank you so much, Chief, for saying those additional words. Would the Commissioners, anybody want to say something? I actually want to echo that. I mean, we've set it up here numerous times, for all three of you to be nominated by your peers in a group that is clearly, no bias here whatsoever, of an incredibly high caliber, and there are so many deserving people to choose from, is an incredible recognition. But having in fact worked with Clyde Hill and just had the opportunity to observe some of the heroics of working a full-day job and then doing the same sorts of crazy responses, but with much greater burden of effort that the volunteers and all the paid staff do, is an incredible, it's quite heroic. So, that, if with that, we would like the opportunity to take photos with you guys.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I also just want to thank all of you guys for being here and being nominated, and all the hard work, you know, it was really, I came in kind of late because I had to have a discussion with our housing director, but I just want to, you know, from my dichotomy at the end and everything that Dave mentioned, our fire chief, I mean, that's amazing, and I mean, just the dedication that you had to stay that evening to make sure our constituents had the coverage they needed, you know, it's really heartfelt, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Also, Madam Chair, I'd just like to echo what the other Commissioners did. Thank you for the work that you do for Santa Fe County. Please don't stop. Appreciate that work that you three do. Thank you. As well as your team, that somebody else mentioned too. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Congratulations to all of you. You've done, you make Santa Fe proud, and you make us look better than we are. So, we are grateful to all of your hard work. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you for, I have a funky microphone here. Congratulations for all of you. You make us look good, and when we can count on county employees to step up. And it's a good, strong organization, the county, and that's because of all of you. Congratulations.
Thank you all. So, I think it is the photo op. So I think it is the photo op. Yes?
While we're on the subject of new employees and years of recognition, I just wanted to note that our newly elected Sheriff, Don Mendoza, just came in and wanted to welcome him to the county as well. I think this is his first opportunity to step into a BCC meeting.
Yes. Thank you very much for joining us and welcome. Hope to see a lot of you. How's it going so far?
Great.
Thank you. So if we're ready, we can move on to the consent agenda. Do any of the Commissioners have anything they want pulled for discussion from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections or abstentions? Okay, so the consent agenda is passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, Ms. Salazar, can I get resolution numbers?
Chair Hamilton, the resolution just passed within the consent agenda is Resolution 2019-9.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So that takes us to action items. I'm sorry? Thank you. So actually, I was just reminded, thank you, that we actually moved some items up from matters from, from the Commissioners. There are two resolutions that we were moving up because there are people in the audience that really need to be able to return to other activities. So, so we are going to move over to 6A1 and 6A2. So the first one, number one, is resolution in support of the Proposed Health Security Act in the 2019 legislative session being brought forward by Commissioners Moreno and Hanson. Commissioner Moreno, do you want?
On January 4th, when the HPPC met, I attended and, and I was compelled to, to bring this to the commission today. I'm not going to talk much, but these are, these are two resolutions aiming to, to make sure that New Mexicans have the best quality care that the state and the county can provide. And so I would like to introduce Patty Patricia, would you like to introduce your, our guests?
Thank you, Commissioner, and good afternoon, Chair and members of the commission. As Commissioner Moreno was saying, our Health Policy and Planning Commission wanted to bring this, recommended bringing this before the BCC. And Mary Feldblum, who is the Executive Director of New Mexico Health Security Act Campaign, will be talking first about the legislation that she has been working on for many years, but especially for this 2019 legislative session.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. It's a pleasure to be here. I was here many years ago when this commission endorsed the Health Security Act. And it's been a long process, let me tell you, but it's actually been wonderful because as time has progressed, the bill has gotten better and better. And the way I describe it, it is truly smothered in green and red chili. There's nothing like it. The Act would enable the New Mexico to set up its own health plan. We have a small population. It makes no sense to have this very complicated multi-payer system that we're confronted with where premiums keep going up and out-of-pocket costs keep going up. So self-insuring as many New Mexicans as we can into one health risk pool, a young, old, healthy, not so healthy, makes a lot of economic sense. The plan would allow freedom of choice of doctor and hospital, including across state lines, just like any insurance plan, it can contract with the MD Andersons, but we know that New Mexicans in the east side go into Texas, for instance. So, and the services offered, and I'm talking services, I'm not talking copays, deductibles, premiums, can be no less than what the states, state employees have. The commission that would be responsible for this plan is a citizens board. Over the years, people, nobody wanted a state agency running this. And so the ideas, farmers and ranchers in the northeastern part of the state said, this sounds like a co-op. And I think that's what the image is. It's a geographically representative citizens board, 10 representing consumer and business interests, five representing health facility and provider interests. They all have to be recipients of this plan. When you think about Medicaid, the people who make laws about it, rule, make rules about it, administer it, don't receive it. And so they're part of this co-op. It would be paid for by using existing healthcare dollars, and that's a lot of ifs, given what we know is going on in Washington, but the existing healthcare dollars that pay for is not all of Medicaid, but Medicaid, if there are agreements with Medicare, state dollars that would go into this plan. And the remainder would be made up with premium sliding scale based on your income. So a minimum below which people wouldn't pay, they'd be, hopefully get the subsidies that are still available with the Affordable Care Act. And then there's a cap at the high end, and employer contributions. There are groups that would be excluded from this plan, the military, military retirees, it would not be possible for a state to deal with that soldier that's hurt in a foreign country. They have their own healthcare system. There are also, there's also the tribes or sovereign nations and they can choose to voluntarily join. And we're very proud to say that the All Playbowl Council Governors has recently endorsed this plan. And in addition, there are companies that self-insure that come under federal law called ERISA. These are large companies that can choose to join and we think they will. Because they're, Intel and others, they're hurting with rising healthcare costs and the economies of scale of a large health risk pool, even in a state like ours of 1.8 million people, will make a big difference. There have been two studies conducted in New Mexico, they're old, one in 94 and one in 2007. Both, in fact, concluded that if we set up an old-fashioned health risk pool, we would be saving hundreds of millions of dollars within five years. I mean, that is a lot of money for our state. And, and so they're old. What's good is they were done prior to the Affordable Care Act, so they didn't assume the Medicaid expansion, they didn't assume all those revenues that are, that we get from the Affordable Care Act. But the numbers are old and we don't even know what we're spending on healthcare. You can't project a program like this if you don't know what you're spending now. And so the bill sets it out so that the first phase is a fiscal analysis. The Legislative Finance Committee, consisting of both parties and both houses, would be charged with hiring the consultants that need to do a cost analysis, to figure out what this plan costs and what the revenue side would look like. And is this fiscally feasible? If it's not, end of story, or make adjustments to make it fiscally feasible. That projection of that analysis, it would be completed by the fall of 2020. It would take time because a lot of data has to be collected that hasn't been collected. And then the legislature has a choice. If they don't do anything, there is something called delayed repeal at the end of the bill. It's dead. Nothing will, you know, it's finished. If they do, they can decide, do they need more numbers? Because we'll have had a presidential election, there are things that could have changed. Do they need more numbers? Or are they ready to go? And even if, you know, if they decide it's ready to go and this commission is set up, it's going to take time to do this. It's going to take at least two to three years to do this right. You were, this plan, you're gonna, we're gonna have to figure out, and I mean, public input from people in the state who, many of whom have a great deal of knowledge about how to do something like this. How is this going to work for doctors, for hospitals, for clinics, for rural New Mexico, for patients? And this plan is not going to be perfect. So what are our rights? You know, all these pieces have to be put in place so that by the time we get our health security card, go to the physician of our choice, and they're paid in a timely fashion. So it's, it's a go-slow approach, it's a careful approach. We could be the first state to sort of say, hey, we're going to try and take control of our healthcare system. The insurance industry can offer supplemental policies, the way they can with traditional Medicare. And they could also offer to be third-party payers, they could process the claims if they need be. But the caveat in this bill is that if that happens, the claims must be processed in New Mexico. We're creating our own health plan, we want jobs here. And so many of the jobs in the insurance industry are actually done outside of the state. One other thing that we call is icing on the cake. You all came here by car. You're paying for your healthcare through your car insurance. Also, workers' comp. Workers' comp, 54% of a worker's comp premium is health-related. And the superintendent of insurance is mandated to look at the health portions of these premiums and to lower them accordingly. So people look at me and say, why? Well, if I'm in a car accident and I break my leg and the health security plan pays for it, then why am I paying double? Right? I shouldn't have, I'm paying my premium to get this leg fixed through the health security plan. And the same thing with injury on the job. There are liability issues if I hurt somebody who isn't covered by this plan. So it's not just a clear, it's going to be lowered, you know, immediately, all the health components of it. But the superintendent of insurance is required to look at that, and this is a real blessing for many businesses who have, who pay for commercial automobile and workers' comp and also the county, because I suspect that you also pay. So it's coordinating our healthcare dollars in a very efficient way in a state that's poor and can't afford to waste our precious dollars. So that's what the bill is about, has been introduced in both houses. They're exactly the same. There are quite a few supporters on both sides and it would be just wonderful to have your endorsement. We have, over the years, we've had quite a variety of counties and cities that have endorsed this. You would expect Santa Fe would be interested, but would you expect Roswell? The city of Roswell several years ago actually endorsed this bill. And more recently, the County Council of Los Alamos, for the first time, they never had endorsed it, endorsed this. And there was a Republican that, that kind, very wonderfully explained, he said as a Republican, why he felt this was really important for the state of New Mexico to do. So with that, you know, if you have questions, I'm more than pleased to answer any of your questions. And thank you so much for this opportunity and thank you, Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you very much, Mary. Commissioners, Commissioner Garcia?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moreno, thank you for bringing this forward. A couple of questions I have is, what do you feel is the temperature to fill at the legislative session since this is a resolution in support of this in regards to the new administration?
The governor has actually openly declared very much support of this. So that's, that's very positive. And the leadership of both houses, Senator Worth and Speaker Egoff have both declared their support for this. And, and so we're working hard. We have been organizing for so many years, I feel like since 1890 in some ways, but we have so many people around the state that have been, we've offered them workshops, we want people to know with their eyes open, what this will do and what it can't do. And, and so we have enormous support and they are at, we're asking them to please contact their legislators. And as you know, the legislator, I've lobbied for 30 years, it's like a roller coaster. You know, there are always the unpredictable pieces of it. There is an appropriation in the bill for $375,000 to pay for the fiscal analysis that's needed.
So Madam Chair, so the fiscal analysis that happens, what happens for, where does the reoccurring money come from? How does that work to keep this program going? Or it's just based off of the study? The study will determine whether or not it's going to work or not?
Madam Chair, yes, Commissioner. It's the, the only money, it's not recurring, is the $375,000 to invest in this fiscal analysis. And then the decision's going to have to be made. Do we, do, does the legislature want to proceed? If so, then there's going to have to be startup monies for this, to pay for that. And, and that would be recurring because the estimate is two to three years to set it up.
Madam Chair, so I don't know if this refers to item number one or the next resolution that's going to be brought forward. How does this affect the people that are incarcerated?
I'm sorry, could you repeat, affect what?
The individuals that are incarcerated.
This includes the individuals that are incarcerated. In fact, I've had some discussions with sheriffs who are telling me how much the healthcare portion of keeping jail, paying for jails is enormous. And if we can all of a sudden get a healthy population, it may not stop people from going to jail, but at least, as one sheriff said, they're going to be healthier. And so, and, and, you know, the whole payment system of the, of the jail system and how that works, there's time to talk about how to make that efficient. But everybody, it's going to be automatic for almost everybody in the state to have coverage.
Madam Chair, you talked about this co-op, attendees that attend the co-op. Is there jail administrators as part of this organization that's actually going to look at this plan as well?
Excuse me, I didn't hear the question.
So is there, Madam Chair, is there actually jail administrators, wardens, so on and so forth, that actually are part of this co-op team, this team that's going to work together and look at all these studies?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, are you talking about the fiscal, the first fiscal analysis?
Yes.
Or, yeah. The, Senator Howie Morales, because I'm a social scientist, asked me to meet with New Mexico State economists and the Bureau of Business and Economic Research to look at collecting data that's needed. And certainly, people from, from the jails, from the prisons, would have to be looked at in terms of the cost of that population as, as a piece of it. And how it would work under a system like this is going to take time to figure out, but it should be much more cost-effective.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And for the record, you've been working for him so, for so long, he's now Lieutenant Governor. Right? No?
Madam-
Yes. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I'm really happy to help co-sponsor this. I think that it is really an important part of our healthcare in New Mexico and especially bringing jobs home locally where they belong. So I'm, when I saw that Commissioner Moreno was bringing this forward, I wanted to support it because I think it's a really important resolution to be brought forward. And I'm very happy to hear that our new governor is on board. That's fantastic. So, thank you. And with that-
I think there's more discussion.
Do we already have a motion or not?
No, no motion.
If you want to make a motion, I'll-
Oh, I thought you wanted discussion for-
Or actually, if Commissioner Moreno, you brought this forward and then you can second and then under discussion, I'll make some comments.
Okay.
I move. What is this item?
6A1.
I lost my place.
Don't you hate that?
forth, that actually are part of this co-op team, this team that's gonna work together and look at all these studies?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, are you talking about the fiscal, the first fiscal analysis?
Yes.
Or, yeah. The-- Senator Howie Morales, because I'm a social scientist, asked me to meet with New Mexico State economists and the Bureau of Business and Economic Research to look at collecting data that's needed. And certainly, people from the jails, from the prisons, would have to be looked at in terms of the cost of that population as a piece of it. And how it would work under a system like this is gonna take time to figure out, but it should be much more cost-effective.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And for the record, you've been working for him so, for so long, he's now lieutenant governor. Right? No?
Madam--
Yes. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I'm really happy to help co-sponsor this. I think that it is really an important part of our healthcare in New Mexico, and especially bringing jobs home locally where they belong. So when I saw that Commissioner Moreno was bringing this forward, I wanted to support it, because I think it's a really important resolution to be brought forward, and I'm very happy to hear that our new governor is on board. That's fantastic. So, thank you. And with that--
I think there's more discussion.
Do we already have a motion or not?
No.
If you wanna make a motion, I'll--
Oh, I thought you wanted discussion for--
Or actually, if Commissioner Moreno, you brought this forward, and then you can second, and then under discussion, I'll make some comments.
Okay.
I move-- what is this item?
6A1.
I lost my place.
Don't you hate that?
I move resolution, this resolution in support of the proposed Health Security Act in the 2019 legislative session.
And I am happy to second this.
Thank you. So for some further discussion?
Actually, just really a comment, you know, it's, as everybody's already indicated, it's really awesome to see this come forward, and, you know, we're really happy to be a part of it. You know, just to sum it all up, thank you. I also want to thank Commissioner Moreno for bringing this forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to be able to say almost the same thing. This seems so bold. I bet it's been an incredibly long time for you, but this just seems incredibly timely. I think your efforts are incre-- and your whole team are incredibly appreciated, because this just seems like a very progressive step forward for us, and very grateful to you guys for doing this, and to Commissioner Moreno and Hanson for bringing this forward. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The House is unanimously, thank you again.
Thank you so much. And I know the leadership of both houses will be very happy to hear this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair--
And so now, yes.
Part two.
Oh, yes, I was gonna, yes, go right ahead.
Okay. Patricia.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the second resolution concerns the Medicaid buy-in legislation in the 2019 session. At our Health Policy and Planning Commission, Senator Ortiz Pino came and spoke at great length about this buy-in legislation from Medicaid. And Health Action New Mexico has been very instrumental in moving this forward, and at the HPPC, and with us today is the Health Action New Mexico Policy Director, Colin Baliol, and he will speak on this proposed legislation.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, my name is Colin Biao, the Director of Policy and Communications at Health Action New Mexico. And today, I'm representing the New Mexico Together for Healthcare campaign. It's been a campaign that's been going on for about two years now, to really find a healthcare solution that works for New Mexico. And what we've been doing for the past year, or sorry, about two years now, is traveling across the state and listening to the stories that people have about healthcare and how their lives intersect with the healthcare system. And we've heard many of the same things that I think Mary mentioned. Folks are having struggles with affording coverage, many are still uninsured despite the great gains we've made under the Affordable Care Act. We went from having 75% of our state covered to now just about 90% of the folks in our state covered. So while we've made a lot of progress, there's still more work to be done, and we need to focus on how we can make coverage truly affordable for our families so that they can get the care that they need when they need it without breaking the bank. And so, our campaign grew out of the stories that we heard. The families who shared those stories have really been the voices that have powered this campaign. They've gone to their own county commissions to ask for support of a plan that we've been studying for the last year, and that is called the Medicaid buy-in. And what the Medicaid buy-in would do is allow folks to use their own dollars, or tax credits, or employers to contribute to a plan that looks like what we offer through our state Medicaid program. And the reason that we think that Medicaid is a good place to really look at a coverage expansion in our state and help to close that coverage gap is that 40% of our families in New Mexico are enrolled in the program now. And so if we're able to expand it out to more folks, to allow them to buy into the program and close that coverage gap, we can get more people into this one program that's working reasonably well, and improve upon that program to improve how our providers are paid, and ensure that they are reimbursed for the services that they provide. So during the 2018 legislative session, we were able to pass a few memorials to do a study, to look into, how might we design a program like this? How much might it cost? What would the premiums be? Would there be deductibles? Answer those nitty-gritty questions, and then really see if we would be able to bring in some federal dollars to help support this program. And through that process, we engaged the provider community, health insurers, community health workers, counties and their health planning staffs, many constituents in the healthcare system, to really think through what the full implications of this would be. And I'm proud to announce that today, our bill reflecting all of that work that went into building consensus around this plan has been introduced by Representative Debbie Armstrong. It will be House Bill 416. And what the bill would do is create this new public option. It's a Medicaid buy-in for people who are uninsured right now and are really locked out of other types of coverage that they can get. And so it's plugging the holes in the system right now so that we can get more people covered. And by closing the coverage gap, we think we can make sure that people will have regular access to care so that they can manage their conditions and ensure that doctors are paid for those services that they provide. The bill limits costs based on income so that coverage is affordable for folks, and it gives the governor the authority to seek any sort of federal dollars that might be available, and if the program proves to be successful, to expand the program so that more people are able to participate. And so with that, we think that the rollout of this plan would be that folks could get covered during 2020, so we'll have some immediate results, and we'll be able to start getting our families covered soon. And as the option is studied more and we see the effectiveness of it, it would give the governor the option to pursue additional routes to expand that program. And I think that lends itself well to the incredible work that Mary and the folks at the Health Security Campaign have been doing, to really help get more people covered over the next few years, and then pursue an option that's more coordinated, that does actually get everybody into one system. And so, a lot of people have asked, are these plans in any way in conflict? And we don't think they are, we think that they complement one another very well. And with that, I do just want to thank the Health Policy Planning Commission that the county has. There are some incredible folks on that Planning Commission, and I think the county is just so lucky to have such an incredible resource. So thank you so much to Commissioner Moreno for sponsoring this, and we hope that we can answer any questions you might have and secure your endorsement for legislation during the 2019 session.
Thank you so much, Colin. Commissioners, any question? Commissioner--
Madam Chair, thank you for the presentation. In regards to the memorials that were passed, when were those memorials passed?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, those were passed during the 2018 legislative session, so about a year ago.
And so have those memorials, those studies, for those memorials, have they already been completed?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, correct, they have been completed.
Thank you for your presentation.
Any further discussion or questions? So what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Moreno.
I move that-- a resolution in support of the Medicaid-- buy-in, no, sorry.
That's it.
Yeah. Buy-in program in the legislative session. I'll second, or I'll go ahead, Commissioner Hanson.
I second.
Thank you, and I want to again thank Commissioner Moreno for bringing this forward, and to thank you for the work on this. This is again, something that's of incredible value to people. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So it passes unanimously. Hope it helps quite a bit, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chair, Chair Hamilton--
Yes.
The resolutions you just passed from section 6A1 and 2 are the following in sequential order for the record, Resolutions 2019-10 and 2019-11. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So at this time, we'll go back to number three. Action items, if I'm not mistaken. The first one is reappointments, and I guess you can take them in order, Deputy Manager Flores.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The first item on the agenda, under appointments and reappointments, is staff requesting the approval of a recommendation of a county resident to the City of Santa Fe Library Board. In the memo I've outlined, the board was established many years ago, and it consists of seven members, five of whom shall be residents of the city, and two shall be residents of the county. County residents shall be appointed by the mayor on the advice of the county commission and with the approval of the majority of the council. That's why this caption reads, "Approval of a Recommendation of County Residents", not approval of the appointment. We've been in contact with the city since early December. They did receive a letter of interest of one individual for the board, but after field verification, that individual lived outside the incorporated boundaries of the city, therefore eligible for our appointment, not the city appointment. Staff is recommending that Mr. Richard C. Ryan be recommended to the city for appointment to the board. One caveat, the two members, right now, we have a second county member, Ms. Rebecca Alahari. Her term expires in July of this year, and she's not eligible for reappointment, so we'd be looking for a second county individual for recommendation to the city, probably sometime in May and June, so that they can get it in time for his, or excuse me, her, end of her term. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you, Tony, for bringing this forward. I think the library board is really important. Yesterday, at the Clean Energy Conference, a young woman stated that in San Juan County, near them, they have no library at all. And so we are so fortunate, this was in the Four Corners area somewhere, so it could not, you know, but for them not to, for somebody to mention that there was no access to a library is really frightening. And so I'm really happy to bring this forward, and I would like to move forward with the recommendation.
Second.
Is there further discussion? We have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, really quick, Mr. Flores, can you actually, do you know how this library board actually works with the, every two years, the general, the state of New Mexico actually puts out a general obligation bond question to the entire state? Do you know how they work with getting stuff on that?
So Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, all libraries, including the one that we have at Vista Grande and El Dorado, can, are eligible to put in their request on that two-year cycle for the state library materials, and I can't remember the exact title. Libraries, school libraries, and something else, technology or something. So they're able to put in those requests. I don't know specifically how the city's library board works in that process, since it goes through the city, but I can tell you, Vista Grande, who's a county library, does put in a request on that biannual basis to be part of the GO bond. That's how they get most of the materials. The funding on that, I think historically, has been under $35,000 for Vista Grande. I can't tell you what it is for the City of Santa Fe.
So really quick, what's, Madam Chair, what's considered a county library? Vista Grande?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, the county libraries that are solely under the jurisdictions in the county would be Vista Grande, the community library in La Cegu. We help with funding in the City of Espanola.
By funding to the City of Santa Fe Southside Library, Mr. Ramirez, as well as the City of Espanola, City of--
Thank you.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
I believe--
Oh, we have, we, I'm sorry, we have--
A second.
Thank you for the second. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the recommendation to report, Richard Ryan, is passed. So moving right along. Aaron, for reappointment to the County Advisory Council on Food Policy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Hamilton, Commissioners. Aaron Ortigoza, Senior Planner. The Santa Fe Food Policy Council was established in 2008 and has a mission to create and maintain a regional food system that provides safe and nutritious food at reasonable prices to all residents, particularly those in need. Resolution 2008-5 identifies the council membership as 13 members, including two employees from the City of Santa Fe, two employees from the county, nine members from the private sector. Myself and Patricia Boyes, the Director of the Health Services Division, are the two county staff-appointed members. And the private, of the private sector members, four are to be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. Currently, there are two open county positions on the Food Policy Council. Santa Fe County set out a press release and email notifications regarding these vacancies. Four individuals have applied, Tony McCarty, Tejender Ciano, Tamara Zawistowski, and Antonio Quintana. At the December 27th meeting, the Food Policy Council reviewed the applications and made the following recommendations for appointment to the council. Reappointment of Tony McCarty. Tony McCarty has served on the Food Policy Council in his current term since its inception in 2008. He is the Executive Director of Kitchen Angels, a nonprofit that is dedicated to providing free nutritious meals to homebound Santa Fe residents living with chronic or terminal illness. Through his work with direct service for people needing nutrition assistance, he has advocated for policies and partnerships to increase the impact of resources intended to end hunger and help prepare for Santa Fe's future food needs. Also recommended is the appointment of Tejender Ciano. Tejender is the Executive Director of Reunity Resources, which is a northern New Mexico social enterprise with a zero-waste mission. Reunity Resources began working on the waste component of the food cycle and has now grown into a model for the full food cycle, from seed to plate and back to the soil. Reunity Resources offers services such as the Biofuel Collective, a compost program which diverts 1.4 million pounds of food waste annually from the local landfill, and the Santa Fe Community Farm, and also education and advocacy for closed-loop recycling systems. The item before you is to request appointment and reappointment to the Food Policy Council. Based on the council's recommendations, staff recommends the approval of the two private sector appointments, Tony McCarty and Tejender Ciano, to the Food Policy Council in accordance with Resolution 2008-5. Thank you, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you so much, Aaron. Are there any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Hanson?
I was very happy to see this. I love the food policy, and I think it's really a great organization, and I was especially happy to see Tejender Ciano on this list. He is a constituent of mine. He is working, the community farm is in Aguafria Village, and he is working to transform that and maintain its mission of providing food to homeless and other underserved people. And it is so great to have a local business in the village that is really providing services to the community, and especially with his composting service. And then also, Tony McCarthy is such a great contributor to our community and has worked so hard for so many years on these projects and on providing food to people who are disabled. It's really important that we have this kind of, we have these individuals who are so committed to our community. And so with that, I would like to move to appoint Tony McCarthy and Tejender Ciano to the Food Policy Board.
Second.
Thank you. And I just want to echo some of those remarks. I think it's an incredible benefit to the county to have people of such backgrounds and high caliber experience to bring to what we're doing in the county. So I have, if there's no further discussion--
Madam Chair, just have a couple of quick questions, just to echo what the previous Commissioners, is this Mr. McCarty here?
No. No.
No, Commissioner, no.
All right.
Thank you. So I, there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that passes, thank you very much, Aaron.
Thank you.
Hey Brett, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamilton.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamilton and Commissioners. The item that I have before you today is to request approval of Commission District One appointment to the Transportation Advisory Committee. The committee meets four times annually at the moment and is comprised of 13 members. The vacancy that is proposed to be filled today would fill up all of the membership from District One.
I actually have a question. That's a lot of commission, that's a lot of members on this committee. And there were quite a few vacancies remaining, particularly in, well, particularly in District Three, but some in District One and Two. Is that been a problem in terms of having a quorum for meetings?
Thank you. At the moment, it hasn't presented a problem. We're happy that Commissioner Garcia has joined the board and can also make his appointments to the Transportation Advisory Committee. I think we had intended to wait for his election in order to make those appointments. But we do have a full body, and they're all very well-qualified, and it's a wonderful group of people to work with.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
No questions. I'd like to move approval. Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or suspensions?
I just want to ask, so it says that you have vacancies, so that hasn't been a problem, but do you need more people on the committee?
At the moment, we are really only going to be lacking with four vacancies out of 13. So we're going to be looking for three members from District Three, and then there'll be one member remaining to be filled from District Two. So we actually have a very large body at the time, and I suppose more the merrier.
I will, I will work on finding somebody from District Two for this Transportation Advisory Committee.
Also, Madam Chair, so you're Mr. Brent, right? All right, good. And as soon as I get on the committee, if the committee is too large, I will actually look at that and like to see if we can reduce the committee, because if we have committees that are extremely large and it's, so I will look at them and I'll report back to the board.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I think that makes it, but, yeah.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to comment that we haven't had, so there's 13 members, and while we've had seven that all of them show up, so we've able to have a quorum, we have not had a full committee for over two years. So that, with 13 members, we've just really struggled to get a full committee.
Yeah, I would be curious about what the reason for the unequal distribution is and if there, I mean, I have no...
Madam Chair, the reason for the unequal distribution is to cover the larger geographic commission districts. So there's one at-large member, Commission District Three, and one both have three representatives, and two, three, and, two, four, and five have two, and then there's one at-large.
So do you have any further inputs on to the function of this committee that you could share with us at this point?
Madam Chair, well, I'll let Brett elaborate a little bit more. But in the past, the committee has been used for road acceptance, review of roads that the public bring in for the county to consider, accepting for county maintenance. They've assisted us with putting together our capital road projects. Now there's other projects, multimodal, like sidewalks, multi-use paths, that are also, that the committee is assisting with. That's why this committee is now called Transportation Advisory Committee as opposed to it being called the Road Advisory Committee many years ago. And many years ago, we had 15 members and 15 alternates. It was a huge committee. We tried to reduce it even more to like, I think it was eight members, but at that time, the commission wanted at least 13. But yeah, we're open to reducing the number of committee members.
That, that sounds great. I mean, no matter what, I think having this committee is a really well-functioning committee. It would clearly be of value. So if that means slimming it down a bit and trying to find some really qualified, active members, that sounds like something worth working toward.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
When this came up last time, I was, I was on the commission already, and it was one thing that I did push back on not to reduce the members in my district. And the reason why is I wanted a member from the furthest northern part of my district, which I was thinking Oroyo Seco, Santa Cruz area, then Palaki, and then Tzusuke, since they're so far apart. So I wanted to make sure I got those pieces. That's kind of the way I divided them up, so I'd have three members. So if we did look at reducing it, I would probably still try and hold on to three positions.
Right.
If I could.
You know, if it's only, if it's a question of efficiency, but there are functional reasons, that's, that's good input. It just, want to make sure we have, you know, good advice from this committee ongoing basis.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. So... Did you...
I would just like to add that at this moment, I haven't seen any issues as far as the numbers of people and any type of disagreements or consensus issues. Everybody is really, has a technical expertise, and it's very much a technical advisory committee. So I appreciate all the people that are on that committee. And because the county is so large and deals with areas as small as Rio Chiquito and as big as Santa Fe and diverse as a pueblo nation, it's good to have these, these folks.
That sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So do we already have a motion, or do I have to ask for that? We have, we have a motion and a second?
Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Garcia, is the motion being by Commissioner Royball, seconded by Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you, thank you. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that motion passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Flores, the next committee.
Gosh, it's, it's hard to follow people that are much taller than you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is a request of an appointment of a member to the Water Policy Advisory Committee. This is one of those well-intentioned committees that seems to also be lacking membership. We do have a, the maintenance of a quorum, provided that we get this reappointment approved by the board. Basically, the current member that serves as the Chair of the WPAC, her term has expired, and staff is recommending that Ms. Mary Helen Folinstad be appointed or reappointed back as the District Board Member to WPAC. Before there's a motion, in the packet, Mr. Kelly did provide a worksheet of all the vacancies that currently remain on WPAC.
Yes.
We have an Aseca Association vacancy, Small Water System or Mutual Domestic vacancy. We had the Estancia Basin vacancy and District Three vacancy. So now with Commissioner Garcia on board, we should get recommendations for that.
Yes.
Then we have one vacancy from District Four, and then one vacancy from the Central Planning Region. This is a committee, however, that historically has had a problem with quorum. So the sooner we can get recommendations for those vacancies and bring them before the board, I have more confidence in the board being able to conduct their business. So the item today is asking for the appointment or reappointment of Ms. Mary Helen Folinstad to the WPAC as the District One representative, and I stand for questions.
So actually, it was pointed out to me by the committee that I, because I, we have somebody who's highly qualified and in District Four, wants to volunteer for the committee, but that they thought that the positions were not posted. And it's been on my list to come and find out if that is really an issue. Does it have to be formally posted, or is it, it's just any, everybody?
We, Madam Chair, we've attempted to post for these positions, I think, for the last 15 months. So if you have individuals, please get them to me.
We don't have to wait for that then. Okay. So, so, so we do have a recommendation that'll come forward this, right away for District Four, but Commissioner Garcia, I think you have...
Madam Chair?
A challenge.
This is actually, okay.
So, so, yes.
Actually, I was going to just make the motion to appoint Mary Folinstad to District One. Second.
She's, she's currently on as, oh, the Northern...
This is a reappointment?
Yeah, it's a reappointment. Sorry. Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
I think there was a second by Commissioner Garcia.
Well, Commissioner Hanson, go ahead and then...
So I also wanted to make a few comments about the current WPAC members. So Denise Fort, who is, has been on the BBD Board, has resigned. And so that makes J.C. Helms, who we have not had a meeting since January, since December, but end of this December meeting, Denise Fort resigned from the...
That's an automatic appointment. So we just need to change that name.
Yeah, so I'm just pointing that out because I don't think that...
Yes.
Tony or, and so J.C. Helms will be the BDD Board member, and then the BDD Board will be appointing another alternate, I assume.
Commissioner Garcia? Thank you, Commissioner Hanson.
I believe you just, were you seconding Commissioner Garcia to that appointment? You seconded?
I keep trying to...
Yes, I'll definitely second. I worked with Ms. Helen, Ms. Folinstad many, many years ago. She's very qualified for the position.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Royball and a second by Commissioner Moreno. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Royball.
I did want to ask Commissioner Hanson. I was at the meeting where Ms. Fort had resigned or stepped down from the BDD. Was there discussion on appointing an alternate? Or was she going to stay on as the alternate? Do you know?
I don't believe, I don't believe she was going to stay on as the alternate. And so I believe that it was at the end of the meeting, and so there was no discussion about appointing an alternate at that time.
Might be something, Madam Chair.
Hey.
Next.
Okay.
So we're moving on to 3C1. Resolution adopting schedule of new water deliveries for the first six months. John Dupree, thank you. Yeah, you have to raise it all the way up, don't you? The microphone, that's.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. I'm here today to request approval of a resolution adopting a schedule of new water deliveries for the first six months of 2019 pursuant to Resolution 2006-57. This request includes one project for 1.33 acre feet as set out in Exhibit A. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Garcia?
So Mr. Dupree, right?
Yes, sir.
So this, so once again, the county has adopted a policy, anytime anybody comes to get a, gets a water right or a hookup from the county system, this is what they have to come forward for to get approval, right?
Commissioner, that's correct.
So this actually, so this is J.J.R. Greenhouse is coming forward and not seeing to connect to the county utility?
That's correct.
And where is J.J.R. Greenhouse at?
It's in Turquoise Trail Business Park.
And the greenhouse grows, do we know?
It is a marijuana product. It's medical marijuana.
And this has already gone through the zoning department for approval?
Commissioner, that's correct.
So is this actually already in operation? Or this, in order for them to, is this an expansion of their business? Or is this actually to open their business and start moving forward?
This is an expansion of the business in anticipation of new legislation being approved. Is what was communicated to us.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Uh, oh, no.
What's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Hanson, oh. To approve? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Dupree.
Chair Hamilton, the resolution you just passed is Resolution 2019-12.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. So welcome, Erica. Resolution for budget increase. Thank you, Erica.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, County Commissioners. What you have before you is a request to budget $870,000 from the developer fee funds for the acquisition of the land at Camino Jacobo, which includes a purchase of a, the purchase and a Phase One environmental study. The Santa Fe County Housing Authority identified 6.6 acres of undeveloped land on Camino Jacobo, immediately south of the county's existing public housing site. On January 30th of 2018, the Board of County Commissioners authorized the county manager to negotiate a purchase agreement with the owner of the subject land. On November 28th, we ratified that. The terms to, to the term, I'm sorry, we ratified the signature to the terms of the purchase agreement and the settlement documents for the purchase of the land. Our request today is to budget $870,000 from the developer fees fund. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Erica. So Commissioners, Commissioner Hanson.
I am very excited that this is moving forward. Providing housing for our population is a big issue, and especially affordable housing. So I, with wholehearted excitement, move to approve a resolution approving a budget increase to develop fees fund in the amount of $870,000 for the purchase of land at Camino Jacobo. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Yes, I can, I have some, some questions. I don't know if, Erica, you need some help or... So this property is actually the property that is, we're good, Joseph's here, is actually south of the existing Camino Jacobo, in between the storage unit place and Camino Jacobo?
I'm going to turn it over to Joseph Montoya, the Housing Director, and Jordan Barella, who manages the fund, for questions.
And just the reason I'm asking is because when Exhibit A shows the plat, but the plat's on, we can't, we can't read the plat.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, yes, that's correct. It's in that land right in between. There's also a small strip of land that goes down to Rafina.
And so is that small?
Raise up the microphone. Small strip of land that goes down to what?
Rafina.
Thank you.
And that strip of land, how wide is it, do you know? Is it enough for possibly alternative access?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, yes, it would be available for alternative access.
And so whenever, thank you, whenever we talk about the requesting the $870,000 from developer affordable housing fees, this, these are actually fees that developers, in lieu of building the site, pay to this fund, correct?
Madam Chair...
County manager.
Commissioner Garcia, actually, I'll have another person answer.
County manager Miller.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, this is actually money that has been in this fund for quite some time. It was from Los Campagnas, when Los Campagnas did a fee in lieu of. We now have inclusionary zoning, so we don't get fees in lieu of. They actually have to build the units. But prior to having the inclusionary zoning ordinance, we did have fees that were provided by some of the developers. But the main contribution to this fund was the Los Campagnas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Manager Miller, is this, does this deplete the fund? Or is there still those little funds in there?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, I believe this specific fund, money from Los Campagnas, was one, the balance was 1.6 million, I'm rounding, before this $870 will deduct that amount from the 1.6 million.
Thank you. Also, just like to add, it's, it's like as Commissioner Hanson said, this is actually very well spent and I'm glad that, that we're moving forward with it. Thank you.
Further comments? I would certainly agree with the value of moving forward on this and thank you for your efforts on this. And thanks to the county manager for, for acting on this. So we ha, oh, Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, and could I also ask that we have a press release written about this so that we can get some press on the fact that we are contributing and moving forward with housing, affordable housing in Santa Fe County?
Frankly, I think that's a really good idea. It, there are a lot of good things that are, the county's really moving on that aren't well-known. And so that's, that, thank you. Any, any further discussions? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your efforts on this. Can I have? Madam Clerk, can I get a resolution number on this? I think you're, I think you're getting it for me. Yes, sorry.
Chair, that is fine. Chair Hamilton, the resolution you just passed is Resolution 201913.
13. Thank you very much. So now we're moving on to 3D miscellaneous. The, the communications radio series of actions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief background, the county and the city stakeholder group has been working on their P-25 project, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing, it's in the memo, but we've been working on a joint project that basically brings our emergency communication radios up to federal standards. We've issued RFPs, we've done analysis, we've gotten reports and specifications through this long process that's gone on all over two years. Late last year, December of 18, the stakeholder group met and tried to identify a path forward on implementing the P-25 radio core, which would be located at the RECC Center and the consoles in the dispatch area as part of Phase 1 of this project. During that time, the City of Santa Fe was looking at putting their bond on for, for their sales to get their capital projects in place, or in line, I should speak. When the stakeholder groups met together, an opportunity was presented that the city and county could now fund not only Phase 1 of the P-25 project, which is the core, and the consoles at RECC, but also jointly look at a procurement that would allow the city to get a new prime site for their telecommunication, emergency communication systems. The combination of those two projects into a singular procurement was viewed as an opportunity to leverage dollars on both sides and also an ease of trying to get a larger project for a smaller dollar amount. The item today is threefold. The first item that I'll be looking for approval on is the approval of an MOA between the city and the county that outlines how the funding for this joint project would be funded. The city is responsible for 100% of their prime site. The city and the county will share equally the cost for the core and the consoles out at RECC, which is always the way it is intended to be and is in line with the JPA. So that MOA is the first step to get us in the door to have the county act as not only the fiscal agent for this project, but also the procurement processor of you of trying to get this. So that's the first item I'll be looking for an action item on. The second item is a dovetail of that, that's actually requesting authorization from the Board to utilize a New Mexico State Price Agreement for the project, for the combined project, the core, the consoles, and the prime site. The Santa Fe County Procurement Code and processes allow us to utilize state price agreements or alternative procurement methods if the Board approves it and if the dollar amount exceeds $250,000. So the second item I'm looking for action on positively would be the use of a statewide price agreement for this project. And then the last item is the catch-all resolution that we've been using, and you'll see it later in the agenda, for these projects that have multiple facets, multiple agreements with vendors, multiple purchase orders, any remaining items that have to be negotiated. This resolution would then authorize or designate the county manager to finalize and execute all those necessary documents. So what I'm looking for is three, three items. The first one, if we can, Madam Chair, if there are no questions?
Are there any questions from Commissioners on the technical aspects of this?
Madam Chair, if question. So I understand, first of all, Sheriff Mendoza, I don't know if he, I know Sheriff Mendoza has been actively working with the city police department, and I don't know if he would like to get up and speak to the situation or to, not situation, to this request on the agenda. Welcome, Sheriff.
Good afternoon. Adon Mendoza, Santa Fe County Sheriff. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'd like to say that I support this P-25 program and the MOA and the cooperation with the City of Santa Fe. As the Sheriff's Office, as you know, one aspect and one important aspect of public safety and doing our job and responding to emergencies within Santa Fe County is communication. I think this first phase is going to be an important part of, of increasing our ability to communicate, will better the equipment, and I'm looking forward to working with Director Martinez on further phases of the project to ensure that our needs are met, that the community's needs are met in, in reference to communication, especially emergency communication. As a sitting member of the RECC Board, I think we have an opportunity to tailor this project with the city and other stakeholders that utilize the RECC to ensure that we have what we need to provide the best public safety service for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriffman.
Mr. Flores, so once again, the cities, the city's going to pay for their share of stuff within the city limits, and then we're going to share the stuff at RECC, in a nutshell, same cost, half?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, yes, the city's on the, on the hook per se for 100% of the prime site under one procurement. That's all on them. The P-25 core and the 13, 13 consoles, 13 consoles that will be located at our RECC center that's jointly operated will be split 50/50.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Flores, so the, so this, this will actually upgrade the RECC to current day? Or are we going to come back in the next year, two years to actually ask for additional?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Garcia, just to give you a little background on this project, the, the radio system that's been in use at the RECC and between the city and the county has been in place since 2002. And the current radio system is reaching end of life to where it's not going to be supported anymore. So what we've done with this project is we've broken it out into three or four different phases. And once those all are completed, we'll have an upgraded radio system and infrastructure with redundancy that will be able to take us into the next 20 years or, or so, hopefully. But to, just to, to map out the plan, so the first pro, the first phase is the core, which is the core radio system console, and then the dispatch consoles that will be going into the RECC. There will be 13 of them. And, and so that will, with, that will enable us to have new, new communications equipment within the center to be able to broadcast out to our responders, both City of Santa Fe, Santa Fe County, and the Town of Edgewood as well, because we represent all three agencies from, at the RECC. The second phase will then be to build out the infrastructure. Well, that will be radio towers, mobile and handhelds that the, that the officers and the firefighters will use in the field. And then the, the third phase, third phase and, and the back end of the project will be redundancy so that we not only have one system, but we have a redundant path in case we have failures that we can have something to switch over to. So it's a big project, and we've been working on this for many years now with this stakeholder group between the city and the county. And, and we're happy to see this finally coming to fruition. So the, the prime site that the city is responsible for, that's their tower and that's their equipment that, that allows us at the RECC to transmit to the city units. So that is a required piece that they need to upgrade on their own. And we just kind of brought that together so that we could get, like, like Mr. Flores mentioned earlier, we can use economies of scale to get better pricing, more equipment, and have one big project.
Madam Chair, Mr. Martinez, so that, so, kind, I, I, I follow and thank you for the description. So every police unit, city, county will actually have the same radio? Every car, city, county will actually be able to talk to each other through dispatch?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Garcia, so that's a little bit complicated, and the reason is because the county fire department, county sheriff's office, and the city fire department and city police department use different frequencies on their radio systems. So the benefit of this new system is that it allows the core to, to sustain and support both or all of the frequencies that we will use. As we move into the second and third phases of the project, we're going to upgrade to digital systems, which will be, they'll be able to talk back and forth to each other. Until then, now that we upgrade the core, they'll be able to, to communicate through our patching system that we currently use. But eventually, in the second and third phases, we're going to move from analog to digital systems, which will be able to sustain both or all frequencies that they use. So to answer your question, yes, eventually.
Madam Chair, Mr. Martinez, so the, the fire department, a county fire department will, this helps them out as well, correct?
That's correct. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Garcia, every one of our stakeholders, every one of our client agencies for the RECC will benefit from this new system. And that, again, is, is the city police, city fire, county fire, county sheriff, and the Town of Edgewood.
And in the future, will we be able to communicate, we can, a little bit more clearly with the state police department?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we're working on technologies now that will, will enable us to put the frequencies that the state police use in their, in their units on an interoperable channel with all of the 911 centers in the state of New Mexico. There's, there are plans in the works now to have interoperability between all agencies. So eventually that will happen as well, yes.
Thank you. A question for Mr. Flores. In regards to the project management, who is the project manager, city or county on this project?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, the county will be the lead project manager for this entire project. The city has identified Chief Babcock from their fire department to lead their efforts for the prime site. And the city is also responsible for doing the IVV testing, which is typical in large IT projects. They'll take on that burden for the implementation. But Santa Fe County is the lead on the project.
Thank you. And with that, if there's no further question, I'd like to make a motion.
I, I know, Commissioner Royball, had a question.
I'll go it in, if Commissioner Garcia wants to make the motion, I'll make the second and under discussion. Well, actually, I'd like to actually hear from our, you know, I appreciate the insight and, and listening to the advantages from our county sheriff, Mendoza, but I'd also like to hear from our, our fire department chief, Spurling.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Royball, I'd like to echo what the sheriff had said about the progress that we've made in a relatively short period of time. We've been talking about this for a considerable amount of time, but it seemed like within recent months, the stars have aligned, and we've been able to pull together a considerable effort here to move our radio communications system forward. And this is an exciting Phase 1. Phase 2 will be just as exciting and will add capability for all of public safety within Santa Fe County. And with that being said, I would like to thank Mr. Flores, the county manager, as well as Chief Babcock from the city and the city manager for helping us, just as I say, bring the stars together and make this a reality. I think over the next couple of years, we're going to see some, some really positive change in our ability to communicate more effectively within Santa Fe County, both city and county.
Thank you, Chief Spurling. I do want to most definitely thank all the insight and, you know, as, at one point, and not very long ago, it seemed like I was a new commissioner sitting on, on the pedestal up here, and I remember this coming up since the beginning, and Director Ken Martinez coming forward and staying diligently pushing for this effort. And, you know, I just want, you know, I've heard, I've heard the advantages for some time already, and it's really great to see this come to be. Dave, you've been up quite a few times as well. I talked to Sheriff Mendoza, you're a new sheriff this year, but I know that you supported it since you were a deputy. So it's, it's really great to see this moving forward. And, you know, if, if, do we have a discussion? Okay.
Commissioner Hanson?
Just a point of order. I think that we have to move each of these items separately. So I think we need to.
Yes.
Do 1A, B, and C.
Yes. So is there any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I think this is fantastic. I've been working together with the city is really important. The RCE has been, this has been long coming, and I know that. So I'm grateful for the coordination and cooperation.
Commissioner Moreno?
I, I love the metaphor of global, the stars and all that, but I know it's been an effort to, to get to this point. And I'm, I'm really happy that we're going to be leading the pack. And thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd humbly request that we remove the word diligently from Commissioner Royball's description of Mr. Martinez's efforts over the past few years.
Humbly, huh? I guess I can, I can grant that. So if you would.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval memorandum of agreement number 2019-0179, RECC-BT, between Santa Fe County and the City of Santa Fe.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second for the first piece. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? So thank you. So.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for item B, approval utilized the New Mexico State Price Agreement number 70-000-160014 AJ for the project?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Yes, Madam, Commissioner Hanson?
Have we voted?
Yes, we voted. It was unanimous, passed unanimously.
I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the county manager to negotiate and execute all agreements and relevant documents to execute the public safety radio communication system solution project.
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed or abstentions? So that passes unanimously as well. So thank you very much. This is a big step forward. Very appreciate all of your ongoing hard work for this. Thank you.
Chair Hamilton, for the record, the resolution you just passed is Resolution 201914.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we're moving on to D2, request for approval of the Design Build Institute Agreement. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. We're here before the Board to ask approval to, of the Design Build Institute Agreement number 2019-0016-PW4/BT between Santa Fe County and Integrated Water Services in the amount of $7,750,000 exclusive of GRT for the design build project delivery services for the water reclamation facility. This also asks for authorization for the county manager to negotiate the final design and execute the contract and the purchase order. We issued the RFP, Madam Chair and Commissioners. In, in early in 2018, the Board, we requested and the Board approved allowed us to use the design build delivery method, which is a requirement of our regulations. So we received three proposals, and we found that Integrated Water Services and partnering with Solder Miller Engineering provides the best value for the county for the water reclamation project. Without getting into too much detail, this is the quill plant located at the penitentiary of New Mexico and to bring this up to compliance with Environment Department and our operations. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll stand for any questions that we may have.
Just before I ask for any, Commissioners, can you provide clarity? This is a complete rebuild? If I'm not, is that not true? It's not a repair of the existing facility?
Madam Chair. This is a complete redo of the, of the facility.
Right. That's what it said, but it just sounded, okay. So Commissioners, any, any questions for Commissioner Hanson?
I move to approve this request of the Design Bill Institute Agreement between Santa Fe County and Integrated Water Services in the amount of $7,750,000 exclusive of New Mexico GRT for design build project. I just also want to comment, I think that wastewater and sewers are an incredibly important part of what we do as a county, and to bring this plant up to standard to all of our, for all of our citizens is really important. And so thank you for bringing this forward. I'm excited to see this project move forward.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hanson. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. I just want to add to that, that, that this design, this rebuild should allow higher quality treatment, which will expand our reuse opportunities, which is also very exciting. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Seven million, seven, eight million dollar project. I have a couple of questions on it. And, and the whole rebuild of the, of this is basically to redo the entire quill plant. plant. Yes, though?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, correct. To upgrade and to improve the facility.
So the entire quill plant is actually relining those ponds out there? Is, this is actually for the sprinkler system that needs to be watered?
Discharged.
All of that whole entire thing out there?
That's correct.
And where does the 7.7 million dollars come from?
There is, um, an amount coming from capital outlay, 2.7 million, and the remaining funds are various GLB series from 2013 through 16.
I guess the concerns I have is this project actually was taken over by the state of New Mexico. This, we're actually operating the state of New Mexico prison system, sewer system. And this plant, back in the days, was actually taken over by the county with the intent to connect our public safety building out there, movie, movie studios, studios out there. And across the rotary there, their state land office had three sections of land that they were actually going to develop as a housing project. So all this stuff was starting to happen off of State Road 14, to take over the state's, state of New Mexico, New Mexico's penitentiary, wastewater treatment facility. And so the, some of the current concerns I have is, are we going to have development that's actually going to allow this plant to be at its capacity? Or are we building too large of a plant?
Madam Chair and Commissioner, that's my understanding, but I would defer to the department to comment on development and who they plan on utilizing the plant.
Mr. Dupree?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, the master plan that is currently being completed includes provisioning for all of SDA one sewer area that is beyond the service area of other utilities like ranchlands or Oshara Phase One's sewer treatment plant to be able to provide sewer service in a modular, expandable format such that we don't pay the upfront cost for all of it and that we can actually use any kind of developer contribution that may be required to support that expansion when needed.
So some of the other concerns that I have is this is, this upgrade of this sewer system that the county is operating is pretty much for new development.
I'm sorry, pretty much for what, sir?
Is, is for new development.
Thank you.
And so some of the concerns I have is taking existing developments in that area there, definitely in Mr. Moreno's district there on the south side of I-25, which older subdivisions near the National Guard. How, how do we get those people off of septic tanks? Do we have a plan for that?
The master plan includes the demands from all anticipated areas within SDA one. I do believe, I'm not certain about the areas that you're mentioning, but I do believe they are outside of SDA one. So that is not specifically taken into consideration, but it being a modular design, it would be reasonable to conclude that, uh, an additional expansion could be facilitated.
So perfect example is Las Lagonitas subdivision. But what's, there's, is there a plan to actually get them to this new 7.7 million dollar facility? Just as a way, I know Las Lagonitas subdivision is off of I-25 and it's because it's, it's, they, they have a lot of swamp lands in there, so a lot of their septic tanks are failing. And so I'm just wondering how, what larger picture is of the 7.7 million dollars?
If, if you don't mind, good, um, what area are you talking about? I'm sorry.
Las Lagonitas is a subdivision at the La Cienega exit, two seventy-one exit. It's a subdivision there that's, the septic tanks are failing. So I'm just, 7.1 million dollars, I would like to see how we can possibly get existing septic tank users to this plant instead of everything in SDL one, which is the growth proposed for Santa Fe County. So that, that's where I'm, that's where I'm wondering how we're going to go. It's another question I have is, we're actually operating the state of New Mexico's sewer system for, for, for the correction department. And have we talked to the state of New Mexico, the state legislature, the corrections department to see if they can participate in this 7.7 million dollar project?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, we had not specifically requested for them to provide financial contribution because the contract we originally negotiated with them requires that we provide all of that expense. And it's something we could request, but we have not.
And so that contract with the state of New Mexico, is that a 25-year contract or a 99-year?
It's a 25-year, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, it's a 25-year renewable contract.
So those, those are just some of the concerns I have is we're actually, we're going to rebuild, we're going to rebuild the state prison system. I understand all the connections that are needed that the county actually provides us. So those are just some of the concerns I have. Another concern I have is, who's the project manager on this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, the project manager on this would be me.
Commissioner Garcia, is your concern that this sounds like a lot of money for sewage treatment, a modern sewage treatment plant?
It's not that it's a lot of money for, for, for an upgrade of, or a rebuild of a, of a system. I'm just wondering what, what, what the larger picture is for the counties, how are we going to get other people off of septic tanks and get to this, to this plant instead of serving the new developers, development, basically?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, in response to that, I would mention that we are anticipating in the near future doing the sewer, um, plan for La Cienega. And we can take a very similar approach with any other areas in the region that would be able to utilize the facility in the future for existing uses, if that's a desire.
I would also think that the, you know, planning is an important thing. If there are areas that where we want to start moving toward more sewage treatment, that, that's a planning consideration that ought to perhaps be brought forward, including in our strategic planning, which we might be able to do. I see Mr. Kelly moving up here, so. Mr. Dupree, go ahead.
Uh, Madam Chair, another item mentioned by Mr. Kelly to me is one that is very important to take into consideration, which is the current facilities failing. It has been something we've postponed repairs in anticipation of this reconstruction and we've been provided sufficient leeway from regulating agencies in anticipation of this occurring.
There's no doubt about that. I think you made that clear. We've been aware of that for a long time, so it's a very good point. Commissioner Garcia, was that all you had at the moment?
I'm just a little concerned with the project management, not that you don't have it, not, not that you can't do it, just, just the workload I think utilities has.
I, I can't, I.
I just have a little bit of concerns, just not that John may or may not be able to do it, just, just the workload that utilities has currently with the current, so have no further questions.
Other Commissioner, Mr. Commissioner Moreno?
The, um, can, would you describe this, uh, this pro, project to be modular, that can be expanded? And that, that's a, in, in my view, I think that's a, a good, a benefit because if we were to try to, uh, to, to build it all at once, it would be a disaster. Looking down the road, beyond my lifetime probably.
Speak for yourself.
That area is, is in need of these facilities. And I think if we have a, a good, uh, plan that, that gives us, uh, a really good start and maybe a little bit more, uh, we could be, um, be in business with, uh, with a good system. And, uh, on that basis, um, I'm going to support it.
Further discussion? So I believe we have, um, a motion and a second. So, um, uh, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections or any, um, or abstentions? Thank you. So this passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So that will move us along to six, to three D, three. Approval for amendment number two for electronic monitoring. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, uh, we're here requesting approval of the Second Amendment to Agreement 2017 dash zero one five four dash CORR forward slash IC. The original contract is with BI Incorporated Technologies for the Electronic Monitoring Services. The contract originally allows for these amendments to extend the term and increase the compensation. The total contract sum to date is not to exceed 1,520,000 exclusive of GRT for electronic monitoring. With that, Madam Chair, I'll stand for questions.
Are there questions from the Commissioners?
Can I have a question?
Commissioner Moreno?
Um, how, how do these, um, work? How, how are these used by the, the courts and other people who, um, who are the, the people who are having the, these, um, uh, devices on their legs? How, how do they work and, and how expensive are they?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moreno, the, um, the actual, um, assignments to, or judgment comes from the, from the courts. Rather than incarcerating individuals, they are assigned to be electronically monitored. With who is being monitored, I would defer to the department and the operation of this and implementation of this contract if there's.
Also, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moreno, on that, on that point, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Is what's interesting about that is, correct me if I'm wrong, with Sadio is, so whenever a judge has somebody, they let them out of jail or they let, so the judges, the judge requires the ankle monitoring. And so we, the county taxpayers, have to pay for that ankle monitoring.
Yes. Yes.
Director Sadio, I know you're going to speak to this and I just wanted to add the question about the increasing, if, if fact it is, but it seems that this is an increasing burden and an increasing cost. Can you give us some insights into all of these questions?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, uh, would you allow me to respond to?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you.
There are various different offenses that are designated by the courts, both district and magistrate, to individuals in lieu of incarceration to be placed on devices for modern, to monitor them in the community so they could be, um, go to work, go to school, be productive. So those are various misdemeanors, um, that are being placed in that, and like I said, in, in lieu of incarceration. The devices vary. We have three devices. We have a GPS system. We do have a sobering system and then we also have a, a drug testing system that we have for these individuals. To respond to your question. And for the record, Pablo Sadio, Public Safety Director for the county of Santa Fe.
Thank you, Director Sadio. Do you, um, the judiciary is, is, is the entity that, that applies the, the restriction? Is that correct?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Moreno, that is correct. The electronic monitoring program is run by Santa Fe County. And the judges, both magistrate and district court designate those individuals or order them on those type of, on that program with those devices.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to try to pick a fight with the, with the magistrate judges today. But, um, it, have, have you encountered, um, situations where, um, you would, that it would be more useful to have a person, um, without, uh, an EMS versus, uh, someone who you really want to keep track of?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moreno.
Where's, where's that line?
Well, again, that, that is designated by the courts. We operate, uh, that program as if it's deemed necessary by the judicial system to place an individual, uh, for instance, in our GPS system so they can be able to locate this individual based on their offense. Again, that is entirely up to the, the courts. One caveat to that question, I think it's important to know for the, for the board, is that, again, this is a Santa Fe County-run program with, has specific criteria to enter into the program. And then we monitor that.
So, um, I'll pass.
So Director Sadio, it, do you feel like this is a pretty successful program? I, I don't mean to be putting you on the spot. You're smiling at me like I am. I'll actually, I'll add my, my thoughts to it. It seems like, uh, uh, on the surface, a good thing to be able to have alternatives to incarcerating people. It's, yeah, yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, you're absolutely correct. I, I think, you know, our responsibility to the community is to public safety, number one. Secondly, I think it could be a viable program, but I think there has to be discussions to, um, kind of limit the amount of people, uh, that are placed on these, uh, in this program and on the devices. I have a very small department, um, that handles a very big caseload. And I have been in discussions with the county manager in regards to this. And I think that there has to be more parameters put in, in, in place for us, the Santa Fe County, to, uh, ensure that this program is viable.
Well, I appreciate that because I think that's what Commissioner Moreno was driving at and I think that's what I was trying to drive at because, um, the increasing costs, if they're acceptable, it's an interesting position because if you're keeping people out of an incarceration situation, that's great, but it doesn't probably substantially reduce the cost of the jail. It's still there. You, you want to keep people out of it, but there's, those costs are probably relatively steady, but these costs are increasing. So we have to plan for that and/or also assure that the program is viable, you know, that it's, that it's as successful as possible. It sounds like adding parameters is, might be an important thing.
Madam Chair, just really quick, um, thank you for answering the questions, gentlemen. And, um, so this is already an existing service. Maybe I actually should, should have waited for my questions at a later date because this is already, like I said, an existing service. We've already talked it out, we've already vented. And so this is just an amendment to the contract. So with that, I'd actually like to make a motion for approval. There's no other comments?
I'll second.
So is there, I have motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any, any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. So that moves us on to, um, the amendment one for the La Familia Medical Center. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we're here before you to ask for approval of amendment number one to Agreement. of amendment number one to Agreement 2018-0047-B-CSD/MM with La Familia Medical Center for an addition, extension of an additional year and increasing the compensation for, to provide health care services to low-income residents. The total contract would, the increase would be for $886,000, is what we're asking for approval on the compensation, for a total contract sum of $1,672,000 to provide health care services to residents. With that, Madam Chair, I will, we entered into the agreement in January of 2018.
Thank you. Are there questions from the Commissioners? Rachel or Patricia, do you have information you think would be useful to provide?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Just that this is part of our implementation of the accountable health community across Santa Fe County, and La Familia as our largest QHC, federally qualified health center, has been providing primary care, medical, prenatal, and dental over the past year, as well as navigation services, which means connecting people to the services they need for health and well-being, and so this simply continues that, and they've been doing an excellent job, and the numbers of people that they are serving has been right on par of what we had hoped over this past year, so we think that a continuation and extension of their contract is warranted.
That's, Commissioner Hansen?
I think that this is definitely warranted, especially with the expansion of the new facility, which we are having a ribbon cutting on February 2nd, just bring that in for the new facility at La Familia, but La Familia provides a tremendous amount of services to our indigenous population and to other people. I mean, anybody can go to La Familia, it is not just for people who do not have the money. So I think that's an important thing to mention also, that La Familia serves a tremendous amount of people and provides a wide service, and I'm very proud to have it in my district, so thank you very much for bringing this forward. And with that, I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Amendment number one to Agreement 2018-004-B-CSD/MM with La Familia Medical Center, extending the term an additional year, blank, blank, blank.
So I have a motion and a couple of seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Thank you very much. So that moves us on to number five, amendment number four, between Santa Fe County and the Santa Fe County Recovery Center, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, we're here requesting approval of amendment number four to Agreement 2016-0150-DWI/BT between Santa Fe County and Santa Fe Recovery Center, increasing the compensation additional $150,000 to provide detoxification services to residents of Santa Fe County with a total contract sum of $1,350,000, exclusive NMGRT, and I'll stand for any questions from the Commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Garcia?
Another great organization that does well for the community. If there's no other questions, I'd like to move for approval.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Passes as well. So that moves us on to the added item, number six, regarding the all-male ballot election. Mr. Flores?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I alluded to this earlier when we were talking about the three-phase project that we were undertaking. Last week, we were asked to participate and assist the Santa Fe Public Schools in their all-male, special all-male ballot election that'll be held in March. The packet outlines each of the items that we'd be asking for consideration, but I'll summarize them. We're requesting an approval of a resolution that authorizes the county manager to negotiate and execute all documents for the election. The second one, as was a similar case, request the utilization of a statewide price agreement for the purchase of election supplies and related services. And the last one would be approval of a budget resolution to actually bring money into a fund so that we could expend it and then seek reimbursement from the Santa Fe Public Schools. This is all an effort to be able to make sure that the county, through the county clerk who is charged with running elections in Santa Fe County, assists Santa Fe Public Schools to be able to complete their election. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
So Commissioners, any questions on these items?
Madam Chair, just really quick, this is going to be one of the schools, Santa Fe Public School Systems' first mail-in ballot. Just like to have everybody in the audience listening, please get educated and please vote, fill out your ballot. And with that, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Madam Chair, for clarification?
Yes.
Three different motions.
Yes, that's right, that I was gonna, I appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Flores. So is there, first of all, we'll do it as three motions, is there other questions or discussions?
No.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to request approval for resolution authorizing the county manager to negotiate and execute all agreements with the Department, and the documents necessary to conduct the Santa Fe Public School District's special all-male ballot election on March the 5th of 2019.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for item B, is approval to utilizing New Mexico State Price Agreement, number 80-00-1800064, for election supplies and related services.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a couple of seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I have a.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make another motion for item C, a resolution to budget the services related to the Special All-Male Ballot Election Fund 101.
I move approval.
You second? Are you second? He made the motion, are you second, didn't he?
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Moreno, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, they all.
Madam Chair, I just want to, for the record, thank Ms. Thomas and Mr. Frescos, who really pulled everything together, I think it was Thursday afternoon and Friday morning, to be able to bring this forward, so we thank you for your consideration.
Well said, thank you very much for your efforts in this.
Chair Hansen, Commissioners, thank you for these approvals, we're on board, we're ready to go, thank you so much. Chair Hansen, for the record.
And I'm actually Chair Hamilton.
I mean Chair, thank you.
Resolution numbers?
Chair Hamilton, for the record, the two resolutions that you just passed in sequential order are 2019-15 and 2019-16. Thank you, Chair Hamilton.
Thank you so much. So now we have item E in section three, which is the ordinance having to do with the bond sales, so Erica Thomas, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Erica Thomas, Budget Administrator. On January 8th, the Board of County Commissioners approved the resolution publishing the intent to adopt bond parameters ordinance, which is before you today. The ordinance also authorizes the sale of gross receipt tax revenue bonds at a competitive sale and delegates to the county manager to sign the sales certificate awarding the sale to the lowest bidder. The bond sale will occur on February 14th. Today with us is Peter Franklin, our Bond Counsel from Module Spurling, and Eric Harrigan, our Municipal Advisor from RBC Capital Markets, to answer any questions the Board may have, and we stand for any questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Garcia?
We actually, this is the last meeting, and I'd like to make a motion for approval if there's no discussion on it.
I'll second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Any questions for these gentlemen? Or for the county manager? I guess not. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Thank you very much, I knew that, but I totally forgot.
Madam Chair, you might want to open a public hearing and see if there's any comments on the ordinance and then close it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here from the public who would like to speak to this ordinance? Again, is there anybody who would like to make any comments on this bond sale ordinance? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment and ask the Madam Clerk for a roll call.
Chair Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Roy Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Hansen?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia? For the record, he is nodding his head, yes, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you. So I believe this passed unanimously, thank you very much for attending. So we're moving on to matters of public concern, is there anybody here in the audience who has anything they'd like to address the Commission?
Chair Hamilton, what I'd like to give you for the record is the ordinance number.
Oh, thank you, I'm so sorry.
For the record, this is your very first ordinance for the year, so it is ordinance 2019-1.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So matters from public concern, again, is there anybody here from the public who would like to address the Commission?
So I know there's somebody here, and I think they just stepped outside for a minute.
So we have somebody here, come forward, Heather.
Welcome, and if you please state your name, that would be great.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Heather Nordquist, I live in the northern part of the valley, I'm here on two things, and I'm going to try to make it very succinct. The first is the ordinance about money out of politics, and I'd just like to tell you that I support that, and I hope that you support that. The people from Money Out of Politics are here, maybe they will be speaking as well. But I wanted to make a couple of quick comments on the status of the AMIT Regional Water System in the Nambay-Pohwak-Tisuke Basin. We've received some information recently, in November, the OSU released its report as to a new estimate from the Bureau of Reclamation. It about doubles the price of the system, and so we're currently at $421 million, and I have gleaned that that is 90% of Phase 1, 60% of Phase 2, and 30% of Phase 3. Our understanding, although we can't get details, is that most of the county residents would be able to hook up somewhere in Phase 3. So I'm very concerned, we think that they're going to go try to get about $160 million from the feds, and there's been $53 million that's just termed non-federal funding in order to build to that level. More than the initial cost, which is of course a concern, I'd really like this Commission to consider the long-term maintenance costs of a system like that. A system that costs twice as much to build typically costs at least more than the original estimate might have indicated for maintenance and operation, and of course, the county and the residents of the county will be stuck with that bill, whatever it is. So I have been actively working to reach out to my state representatives and federal representatives with my concerns and some questions. I believe this also puts them behind schedule, and they were supposed to start building now in the fall of 2018, so I encourage you all to take really hard look at these numbers. I do have a link that I can send you all, and I will send by email, which just goes through everything that I've found, including a letter from our federal reps to Bureau of Reclamation and their response, and there is some alarm, I believe, at those levels as to the cost of the system and how these are going to be met, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nordquist. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Mr. Me?
William E., 2073 Camino Samuel Montoya, Almo Freo Village. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and I just wanted to thank you for putting our $10 million for the sewers on your capital outlay request to the state legislature that's on number three, and you know, we greatly need it, and we're organizing our citizens to come forward and email and call the legislators, so hopefully we can make some traction on that for you. There's a number of things that I could probably talk about today, but one of the big issues that we've had in our community, and, well, I don't know if you saw my editorial Sunday, and you know, I'm really kind of urging that there be more city and county planning, because we need the city to come and meet with us on water issues and, you know, all types of issues. You know, I kind of put a tongue-in-cheek thing in that editorial about Henry Lynch Road, because you know, we couldn't, in Almo Freo Village, we couldn't get the city or the county to kind of maintain it, and when we went to meet with them, I think it was 1994, we found there was like nine jurisdictional changes, and the road's only a little bit over a mile, and I think, you know, we'll find those kinds of circumstances throughout the county, you know, on West Alameda and on Meadows, you know, and it's been hard, I think, on the county to kind of keep up with all these areas that the city has annexed and then not, you know, supplied services to. Another issue I'd like to just talk about briefly is there's a city of Santa Fe ordinance on short-term rentals, and I kind of think that the county needs to do something similarly, something that regulates bed and breakfasts and overnight rentals, and we're finding that, you know, people are converting their homes to allow these types of activities, and you'll see 18 cars parked in front of a home, and you're like, what is happening here? And you can go to Facebook or some of these other social media sites, and you'll see that home is, you know, for rent, and you know, it's just kind of incredible, and some of them are even like, kind of like youth hostels and stuff, that we have an instance where we have two mobile homes that have been pulled in, and you know, they're on, actually, they were grandfathered onto non-conforming lots, but you know, it's all legal, they have their permits and stuff, but they really aren't paying the impact to the community. I mean, you know, you'll see the 18 cars parked there, and you know, that's a lot in a double-wide mobile home, and it's a lot of impact on a small community. I'm sure that all of the traditional communities are finding the same thing. Oh, and I just wanted to say this is the first time I get to appear in front of Commissioner Rudy Garcia, and I was listening to him on the radio, and I'm really impressed, and thank you, Commissioner, for giving me this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Me. Is there anybody else here from the public who would like to speak to the Board?
Madam.
Seeing none, I'm going to close matters from the public. If the county manager will indulge me, there is, there are another resolution from matters from the Commissioners that, it's been requested that we move up, is that?
Of course, that's no problem, Madam Chair.
No problem, so we'd like to move to six, eight, three, Commissioner Hansen?
Yeah, thank you very much. I realize that this is a law-aborted, but I want to bring forward a resolution urging Congress to clarify the rights.
You can't hear her? She can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my mic on. I will start over again, welcome everybody, I want to go to resolution, I want to go to six, three, a resolution urging Congress to clarify the rights protected under the United States Constitution, are the. Constitution are the rights of human beings and not the rights of artificial entities, and that the government may and shall regulate campaign contributions and expenditures to protect the people from corruption and undue disappropriation influence in elections and government, asking that Congress propose a constitutional amendment to provide such clarification. If you'll see in your packet that this is not only supported by, not only asking this commission to support this, but that also Senator Heinrich and Udall have both supported this, and that there are, Senator Worth has also supported this, and there are a number of people who feel very strongly that Citizens United has really damaged our election system. And so with that, I have a number of people in the audience who, would you like to stand up, who are in support of this? I want to thank you for coming, and so I move to support this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. I don't know if it's out of line to ask if there are other people who, did they want to, that you've come and wanted to speak to this?
John, would you like to say a few words? You have to come forward.
I'd like to keep this very short because this is a little, please come forward and state your name.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, my name is John House. And I'm here, I am president of New Mexicans for Money Out of Politics, and I'm also a citizen leader for American Promise. And these are organizations that are working for democratic reform. And the, this resolution addresses specifically the need for a constitutional amendment to reform campaign finance. The reason we need a constitutional amendment is because the only persons that can tell the United States Supreme Court that it got it wrong are we, the people, through a constitutional amendment. And we have a long history of campaign finance regulation in this country, starting in the 18th century, and we had some very good legislation, federal and state and so forth. But the Supreme Court, over the last three or four decades, whittled away at the rite of government to regulate campaign finance. So we have a lot of support from New Mexico, New Mexican leaders, and we would appreciate it very much. This would be a big statement here. This is grassroots stuff. We need to start with the grassroots to get it working and all the way up to Washington. So since you're short of time, I'll quit there.
Very much appreciated, and if...
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, Commissioner Norcrosen.
Sorry, sir. I didn't get your name clear. Do you know, or does anybody know, if the Congress passes a constitutional amendment, does it actually have to go to the voters nationwide?
It has to go to the legislature. It has to be ratified by two-thirds of the states. So, and...
This is actually to go in front of the state legislature or the federal Congress?
Federal.
This is a resolution in support of this kind of activity, but this is a federal-level action.
So at a federal level, the constitutional amendment, does it actually need to go out to the voters?
Not to the voters. It goes to the state legislatures. Has to be ratified by the state legislature. And by the way, forgot to mention, I think you'd be interested, last year, the New Mexico Legislature passed a joint memorial, House Joint Memorial 10, which supported a particular amendment, phrasing of an amendment. So the legislature is already on board with this thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can ask?
No, this is, if you, and if we could, please, I really appreciate how serious this is, but to keep it short and not redundant, just appreciate the fact that you've come, so.
Sure.
And if you could state your name.
My name is Ishwari Solahub, and I just want to reiterate what was just said, even though I know I'm not supposed to reiterate. It's a federal amendment that will be passed eventually by the Congress of the U.S., and then it has to be ratified by two-thirds of the United States in their legislatures. So the work we're doing here with this sort of local resolution is a pre-ratification effort. It's to keep people here on the ground aware and enthused and supporting the effort so that when the day comes, we need to ratify it, we're there. So I encourage and hope that you will support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, and Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Beth Detweiler. I'm from 11 Craftsman Road in Oshara Village, Santa Fe County. Our Supreme Court is not an assembly of supreme beings. It is made up of human beings, and like you and I, and even NFL referees, court justices make mistakes. Regardless of political power, party, or no party, the majority of Americans feel that the Supreme Court's decision on Citizens United was a gigantic miscall. When we as citizens, or you as elected officials, see a situation that threatens our fragile democracy and our nation, we have the right and the duty to stand up, speak up to fix it. I'm asking you to vote for this resolution and to voice your support for this national bipartisan movement to pass the 2028th Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth. It's really great to see you. Beth is from Oshara Village, and I just want to give a shout-out.
So thank you for that diversion. If we have a resolution, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? So that resolution passed unanimously. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Next, I hope you will all stay because we are going on to the next resolution.
Yes, Commissioner Hanson. Are you going to do Resolution 4 now?
Yes, because they're here. So this is a resolution authorizing Santa Fe County to dejoin the Coalition of Sustainable Communities of New Mexico, CSC, as a founding member. I want to say that today, our new governor, Michelle Lujan-Grisim, wrote an executive order, joining the Paris Accord and a, an executive order to reduce methane in New Mexico. That is a great day for New Mexico, and I think we all need to applaud her boldness and willingness to make climate disruption and climate difficulties and climate change a priority, and that New Mexico can really lead the way. And so with that, that is why I have brought forward this resolution. Beth Beloff is the executive director, and she is here, and she might want to say a few words, but it is, the Coalition of Sustainable Communities of New Mexico is a membership-based, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that is committed to increasing member awareness on national key policy, regulations, issues, and best practice. The CSC will facilitate the adoption and implementation of sustainable initiatives that will continue to create well-being and economic opportunities for the community of New Mexico. And the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Fe has expressed its intent to support greenhouse gas emissions reductions within the county and the community with numerous resolutions, including the most recent numbers, 2018-124 and 2017-68. By supporting and approving the attached resolution, the Board will be asserting in no uncertain term that it seeks to work with other community leaders to accelerate efforts to stimulate resilient, equitable, and prosperous New Mexico communities. I respectfully request that I would like to move this resolution forward.
I'll second.
Okay, so under discussion?
This is the question.
Do you have any questions?
I do have a question.
Commissioner Moreno.
I'm interested to know how many counties have signed on to a resolution like this?
So at the moment, Albuquerque has signed on, and the City of, Albuquerque City and the City of Las Cruces. We will be the founding county member signing on the first, and I think that is extremely exciting, that we are joining with the City of Albuquerque and Mayor Tim Keller, and the City of Las Cruces, who have both shown real leadership in sustainability.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
Yes, this is for Commissioner, thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward, Commissioner. One of the questions I have is on the last page of our packet, and it says full membership is comprised of one elected official from each community plus a senior staff designee. The senior staff designee, is that a county staff member?
Yes.
And that would be from our planning department?
That would be, a county manager would designate, but hopefully it would be from our sustainability department.
Okay, just asking a question, thank you.
Are there questions from other?
No.
I, so, you know, there are a lot of aspects of this that's a wonderful idea, but reading through, I didn't get a good feel for how the group would be funded, so what we're committing the county to in terms of membership fees, and then ongoing projects. So every time there's an initiative that comes up, how does that, you know, there were some, there were some words about a majority vote and, by founding members, you know, by voting members. Some of these efforts could be relatively large, and I'm just asking how that, how the funding goes, and how the cost to the, you know, the costs for different efforts to each of the members might be quite different. So I was wondering how that's envisioned to be handled.
I'm going to let, I'm going to ask Beth Beloff to come forward, but one of the things that it says in this resolution is that we will become a founding member, and then once membership fees are established, it will come back to the Board?
Yes.
To agree to what the membership fee is.
Right.
So there is no commitment of money at the moment.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, may I?
Yeah, you're good.
May, I'm Beth Beloff. The first year is to be funded out of grants. We started with about $40,000 of grant monies to start the coalition, and it's been my intention for there not to be a fee so that there was no barrier to entry for local governments in year one. And in year one, we would then, as a steering group, develop the fee structure. There are some models that I have in mind. There is the Colorado Communities for Climate Action that has a fee structure, but my thought was that we would produce results year one before we establish a fee. Year two, we will have a fee that is established by the members, and I expect there will also be grant funding to supplement that in year two. I just wanted to say in terms of the founding members, the City of Santa Fe, which really worked with me to help come up with these ideas, it, the resolution has passed out of finance and last night Public Works Committees unanimously, and it goes before City Council. I have full confidence it will, it will, the City of Santa Fe as well will join.
Commissioner Moreno, I know you have a question.
Yes.
I have a follow-up question after you.
I have a question.
Okay, thank you.
Can you provide us the website for the Colorado organization?
Yes, well, it is CC4CA, and then it's number four. It's coloradocommunitiesforclimateaction.org.
Okay, thank you.
And I've been in contact with the former mayor of Durango, who now is directing that organization. I think there are 22 cities in it. We're going to be structured a little bit differently because we're not going to be just cities. We'll be cities, counties, and Native American pueblos, nations, and tribes. So it will be all local governments will be welcome in this, in this coalition.
Thank you. I'm, I have a lot of peeps in Colorado. Thank you.
Well, and, and you can also go to our website, which is coalitionscnm.org. We've begun posting some of the work that we're actually engaged in.
Say that again?
And so you'll see the bill that we have drafted, the community solar bill that the Coalition has been advocating for and developing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Norcrosen?
In regards to House Bill 210, sponsored by Roy Ball Caballero and Senator Stefanics, is that a newly introduced bill, or is that last year's bill?
No, this is newly introduced. The Coalition drafted it using Bruce Throne, the utility attorney, and it's also now Senate Bill 281. The same cosponsors in the Senate, there are, let's see, nine, seven other important sponsors.
And does that bill, or those bills have an appropriation tied to it?
Um, no, no, there is no appropriation assigned to that.
Thank you.
So...
And just to clarify, the reason for that, the bill is, is about stimulating the marketplace. So it's really based, it's community-led and consumer-driven, and it's a market-based solution to solar.
So my ongoing question about funding, if there was a fee structure, that's often, membership fees often go to, for operation of the Coalition, right? Actions, though, that then are promoted by the Coalition, do you see those being, where the Coalition and the counties and the cities that are participating agree, and to the extent they can afford to do things, are going to put them into their own strategic plans and operating plans? And so each member is still going to fund its initiatives independently? Or is there a different vision here that I'm missing?
It's my expectation that the fee structure will cover the operations of the Coalition. The, there will be a full-time administrator at some point. I'm executive director pro bono.
Right.
And I will remain in that capacity. But there will need to be a small staff to manage communications with the members, travel to establish more membership and promote the Coalition, and so on. If there are extraordinary expenses because of, for instance, developing and advocating for a particular piece of legislation, then my expectation is that that would either be covered by outside funding, or there would be in-kind donations of sorts from the member communities to help develop through their staff and through their legal departments some of those actions. If there isn't funding to develop, develop... If there isn't funding to develop them, then we won't.
So I understand there's the potential for a bigger voice with a bigger coalition of communities, but some of the funding for activities that the county would then do, it would compete directly with the county or the city sustainability department, potentially. I mean, I'm trying to get a feel for how this would... How these would integrate. And I wonder if Claudia, not no desire to put you on the spot, but can... Do you have some thoughts or some that you can share on this, on how this would work in an integrated fashion with existing sustainability efforts the county is funding?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I just wanna make sure I understand. So first of all, I think that this is still in its infancy. So what this coalition will do is partly still going to be determined. And I think that there will be both activities that are for the legislature, for example, the community solar bill, those kinds of things where perhaps lobbying and the drafting of bills could proceed as Beth has explained. If there's initiative, like perhaps the various members of this community want to go together on a solar garden project, for example. So in that case, I would see that each of the individual entities would find funding to buy... To subscribe to a solar garden that then they can allocate within their communities in whatever way they want to. So in that sense, I think that the coalition itself would not have the funding, but would rather be the impetus for the joining together of the communities to subscribe to a project that then would be brought to their individually... Individual entities to find the funding to communally subscribe to a solar garden, for example. Does that make sense?
It does, and it's very helpful. Commissioner Garcia?
So can you state your name for the record?
My name is Claudia Borchert. I'm within Public Works Sustainability.
So how do you envision your department working with this lady here? In a detailed way, not kind of long about, but in a detailed way?
Well, again, I'd like to just preface that by saying that it's still evolving. The way that I think it works in Colorado, which is the model that we've looked at, is primarily what they're doing is they're putting their voices together as a group to bring issues forward with the legislature. So not dissimilar to the bill that the commission passed last December on items that reduce greenhouse gas emissions on legislation that can help reduce greenhouse gas emissions at the state level. It could be that this coalition then also passes a resolution that says these following actions at the state legislature will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions for our state. So that could be another way in which the coalition works together to... And we could be a part of that voice saying, "We believe this kind of legislation is good to promote sustainable actions in our state."
Thank you. And/or the county, your department could actually take the lead in creating some of these initiatives along with them instead of waiting for the state legislature, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Member Garcia.
Further discussion?
Tap to clean your phone now.
Now I have to clean my phone.
Tap to clean your phone now. I think we have a disorderly commissioner.
You know something?
So we have a motion and if I'm not mistaken, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions?
Just one other item also. Governor Lujan Grisham came to the Clean Energy Conference yesterday and she also supported community solar and all solar initiatives. And so it was really exciting today when the secretaries from Energy, Minerals, and the Environment Department announced this executive order about the changes in climate change. So that was exciting. So, thank you. And thank you for passing this resolution. And thank you, Beth, for your work.
Thank you. So we're going back to number five matters from the county manager.
Yes.
Manager Miller.
May I?
Yes, please. Resolution number, thank you.
Chair Hamilton, for the record, the resolution you just passed is Resolution 2019-18. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, so there were two resolutions, Madam Clerk, the number three and number four?
Yes, correct. And I did announce the one before. And so in sequential order, the resolutions...
Yes, I get that. I just wanted to make sure.
2019-17, we did that. And then the one just now, 2019-18.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair, so we have several items under updates from the county manager. The first one is legislative updates and Deputy County Manager Tony Flores has a report. And then also, I just wanted to comment if there are any pieces of legislation that you would like us to look at, review, give you a summary, please make sure you let us know that. You can do that any day. You don't have to do it just today, but then we can add those to future agendas. Tony?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I left on the dais a copy of this BCC Agenda's Legislative Session Report. Things are starting to pick up at the session in regards to actual hearings. We have yet to hear... Hearings and hear in the same sentence. We have yet to be told how they're actually gonna handle capital outlay at this coming session. We had three different options. There was a caucus today at one between the leaderships of both chambers, but we have not heard how capital outlay will be discussed. I can tell you that all the capital outlay forms, based upon the current ICIP priorities, were submitted to the delegation members last... Early last week. So they've already received all of the authorization requests. Senator Rodriguez has received the two reauthorization requests for our utility corridor projects. So those are in play. The first item I'll go through in the report, it's got a listing of all the bills that are being tracked. There is one piece of legislation, it's Senate Bill 106, that was placed on the Rocket Docket. Remember, the Rocket Docket was intended for those pieces... Excuse me. Commissioner Garcia and I have a chuckle about that. We've been hearing about this Rocket Docket for five years. But pieces of legislation that had previously gone through both chambers and received a positive vote that were then vetoed by the then sitting governor. One piece of legislation that's on the Rocket Docket, a Senate Bill 106 sponsored by Senator Sapien, and that basically changes the definition of a lodger's tax facility and it removes the provision that you have to have three or more rooms to be classified as a lodger's facility, therefore subject to lodger's tax. That bill did go through the House rather quickly. It's now tomorrow morning at 8:30 before tax and rev at the House side, one committee hearing. It'll go back to the floor. That is a positive piece of legislation for Santa Fe County. In your packet, I provided a letter of recommendation from our lodger's tax board supporting that piece of legislation. So unless I hear otherwise today, we will be at committee hearing tomorrow morning testifying in support of Senate Bill 106. The other bill related to lodger's tax is Senate Bill 7, which is Senator Wirth's piece of legislation. That has been held for further discussion. That piece of legislation would take up to 50% of the collected lodger's tax on, let's see, Airbnb or VRBO and put it to affordable housing projects. There was some discussion when it hit Senate Corporation from the, of course, the hotel industry about the provisions of that. So he's held that bill, hasn't been tabled, but it has been held and they're trying to work out the mechanics of it. I am not prepared today to take a positive or negative recommendation from the board on whether we would support that piece of legislation. Otherwise, in the packet, it lists all those bills that we've talked about, the ones that the county has already passed resolutions in support of. And with that, I'll stand for any questions on the very brief legislative update.
Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Hansen?
So I wanna thank you for having Hutch Miller at the community solar bill. When it was going through the House, I... People reported back to me that Hutch stood up and said that Santa Fe County supported this bill and so I am grateful that they were there. There are many kind of community solar and different legislation that I think falls within the bill that we passed in December and I'm grateful that the county is tracking those. So, thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Hansen?
Other comments, questions? There are a few water bills that I'm going to look at and maybe bring to you, but I haven't really reviewed them yet, so.
So just, Madam Chair, just any bills you want that's not on this list. Remember, I am a team member down this year?
Yeah, it's...
Which one?
I wonder...
I'm not real sure. It's the other half of Salt and Pepper.
Ah.
Okay, Madam Chair. Second Order of Business under the legislative update. If you recall, we put a caption on the January 8th BCC meeting for the board to consider capital outlay requests from various nonprofit or community organizations to see if, in fact, we would support that thereby providing staff direction to submit those capital outlay forms. As a reminder, capital outlay forms are due by close of business, so that's 5:00 PM legislative time on February 11th. We do not have another BCC meeting prior to the close of capital outlay forms being submitted. We have a few more requests today that I'd like to go over and get the direction from the board, whether they would entertain staff submitting a capital outlay form that I'd like to go through one at a time and have direction, either positive or negative. To remind you, at the January 8th meeting, the board chose not to support or to be a fiscal agent for the First Presbyterian Church capital outlay appropriation and we did not get support to act as fiscal agent for the Santa Fe Recovery Center's large expansion projects. Those are what we took direction on at the 8th. Today, the first item that I have for the board to consider is that Santa Fe County has been approached to be fiscal agent for infrastructure... Sewer infrastructure for the residences of Plaza del Cerro, which is in the Chimaio area. The Cornerstones Foundation has approached us to see if we would be fiscal agent and project sponsor of a $750,000 capital outlay appropriation to put sewer infrastructure in the Plaza del Cerro area of Chimaio.
I'm sorry, what kind of infrastructure?
Sewer.
Sewer, thank you.
It's a packaged sewer plant. Okay? For three-quarters of a million dollars. This project does not reside in the county's current ICIP listing.
Are we gonna have a discussion on each one of these?
I'll leave that up to the chair, but that's what I would prefer.
I would prefer that. So can I start out with a question? Does anybody else... This... They need a fiscal agent because it's a... Who's applying for the capital? Who's getting it?
Cornerstones would be the applicant. Santa Fe County would serve as fiscal agent. And don't forget...
Who would be the applicant?
Uh, Cornerstones. They're doing the restoration work up there.
Mm-hmm.
They do the restoration of the historical structures or sites. So they'd be applying for... They've asked us to be fiscal agent for their project up in the northern part of Santa Fe County.
Is there a reason that they're not asking a more proximal municipal entity like Espanola to do this?
Actually, Madam Chair, this sits within Santa Fe County.
Santa Fe County?
So it's not one of those...
The city?
It's not one of those projects that sits on the Espanola-Santa Fe County line.
Commissioner Hansen?
So, I wanna... I just kinda wanna hear this again. So what they're asking for is sewer infrastructure for the church?
For that entire community, Madam Chair. Commissioner Hansen, right around the church, the Plaza del Cerro area, yes.
The Prado del Cerro?
Plaza del Cerro.
Plaza del Cerro in Chimaio?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So it's that section and if... And how much are they asking for?
$750,000.
Okay. And then we would be the fiscal agent and we would manage the project or they manage the project?
Madam Chair, as the fiscal agent, we have to have ownership in that asset that would go on our capital outlay rolls and it's yet to be determined on who would be managing the actual installation and procurement of that project. However, since the money would be coming to Santa Fe County, my assumption would be we would be project managers and fiscal agents since it would flow through the county.
And then where would the wastewater go?
Well, Madam Chair, it's a sewer treatment plant, so it's packaged on site.
Oh, so it's a whole package?
Yeah, it's a whole package on site.
So it's a sewer plant, the whole thing?
Yes.
So, you know, this is in Santa Fe County. So this strikes me as something that should be on the ICIP. This is like another county project. So this is like after the fact adding a county project to the ICIP. And I could be wrong. I don't wanna mischaracterize it. None of the things that we looked at at the previous meeting were not... Were unworthy. The issues came down to whether we could actually enter into agreement, like with the church, or whether it took county... It detracted from projects that we... That had already been put as... Set as priorities within the county. So I'm wondering if this falls into that same category?
It does.
Commissioner Garcia?
So really quick, Tony, what is it called again? The Plaza Ciero?
Plaza del Cerro, which is the area around the plaza by the Chimaio church.
So, Mr. Flores, Madam Chair, Paul, doesn't the county own that plaza, the Ciero? As an open space project that we purchased many, many years ago, that centralized area?
We... Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Garcia, we own the open space behind it, but we don't actually own where the church and the community is.
Are we sure we don't own that center plaza area? You're not sure?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I was... I thought we actually owned... Because that is a county road that runs through... The county road runs in that little...
Correct.
That little plaza area.
Commissioner Royball?
Do you know how many people this would serve?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Royball, 30 properties with 21 owners.
30 properties with 21 owners?
Correct.
And this is a pretty congested area in Chimaio, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Royball, yes.
Okay, this is in my district, so I would support, you know, this type of project, but, you know, I'd like to hear from my other commissioners.
Commissioner Hansen?
So, you know, I support sewers 100%, everywhere. This is not a new vision, but I also do feel that it's a little late to the game, like it should be on the ICIP. Like I... Last year, we had the sewers for Aguafria Village on the ICIP and we've had these things on the ICIP for a long time and we keep asking for the money. And Senator Wirth actually told me that sewers were not that sexy. They're more than happy to fund anything that's solar, but for some reason... So I wonder who is carrying this capital outlay request?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hansen, if the board gives me direction to fill out the form, I'd need to talk to Representative Romero Nareda and Senator Martinez and Cisneros. So there's not a person or persons carrying this piece of capital outlay yet. It hasn't been introduced or given to them yet. So there's not a specific person. We would, of course, do as we do all other capital outlays, contact those delegation members where the project resides. So those would be those four.
So the people in Chimaio have not gone to a legislature and asked them to carry this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hansen, community members aren't typically permitted to fill out their own capital outlay form without a fiscal agent being a government entity.
Right. I guess...
So, of course, so Mr. Flores, is... Does DFA actually allow the ICIP plan to be amended for this type of reason throughout the year?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, we are able to amend the ICIP. My concern is in amending it, this later in the game, we won't actually get an ICIP number. So we'd have to submit a capital outlay form, sign that ICIP number.
So if the case was that the county commissioner approved it, you wouldn't get actually a number from the Department of Administration? You would actually get a letter saying, "Yes, your ICIP is amended to allow this project to be looked at?"
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, that would be the intent, but I can't guarantee that we'd actually get that approval or that number.
So, as flawed as our ICIP process might be and suggesting that we really make that something that we look at, especially if we do, you know, additional... We have a budget process coming up and we're gonna spend some time doing... Looking at the capital process and I know this is ancillary, if we need to revise it. But it does strike me as arbitrary and capricious to have a process that includes several public hearings and then have add-ons to that. and then have add-ons to that, that we just- "That sounds like a good idea, that sounds like a good idea", and we just keep adding them. So I am just not inclined to support these last-minute things that take up- that compete with county-defined capital requests and staff bandwidth. Maybe it would be good if, given that, if we heard the rest of the list and then went back and talked about them.
So the next request that we received right before the Board meeting today, were asked to be a fiscal agent for a piece of capital outlay request through Representative Jim Trujillo's office for $75,000 for El Mirador to plan, design, and construct a greenhouse for the purposes of supporting service- serving individuals with developmental disabilities. This project went through the representative's office. Of course, they're looking for a fiscal agent for $75,000. The next request is we received from Esperanza Shelters, again through Representative Trujillo's office, for $150,215 for the acquisition of various pieces of equipment that would be used in their facility. Everything from beds, mattresses, couches, laundry room upgrades, kitchen upgrades, et cetera. And then the last piece of- or the last request that we received, which dovetails to Commissioner Garcia's question about the ICIP. The Madrid Water Consumers Association has met with some delegation members and staff about the possibility as acting as fiscal agent for their fire protection improvement project, which would include lines and a tank, a second tank in Madrid.
I'm sorry, it'll include what in Madrid?
A fire protection line and second tank for fire protection in Madrid. There was a preliminary engineering report done that Santa Fe County took the lead on a couple of years ago, and although that's dated, the costs are anticipated between $350,000 and $500,000. So those are the four pieces of capital outlay requests that we received since the last BCC meeting and as late as 2:30 today.
They're all good projects. That last one in particular. That last one is also something that I think- The first one and the last one should be on the ICIP. Even, and if we need to modify that ICIP process, that's probably critical, but I think that has to go on a process. Commissioner Hansen?
So, and then I wanna ask a few questions about the Esperanza request. So, we own that property? We own part of the Esperanza property, and they want- So this is on a county facility?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hansen, yes. We, being Santa Fe County, have a contractual relationship with Esperanza, and we actually own a few of the assets for Esperanza. That was Commissioner Garcia's project after I left.
Madam Chair, just on that note-
Commissioner Hansen still has the floor.
Can I finish?
Yes.
So, let's say we, if we looked at this project, could we then move this- Could we place this equipment on our fixed asset list?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hansen, we had a similar situation with one of the applicants I just mentioned a few years ago with similar type of fixed assets, and we ran afoul with the DFA guidelines for actually doing that project. Although that project, there were facilities that were outside of Santa Fe County. It was a statewide project, which created another layer of problems for us. I'd have to check to see the rules of fixed asset placement in a facility that we own. I know we've done that in previous years for women's health. I believe we could probably accomplish it through this process.
So Representative Trujillo is- Is he, he's requesting this, so to speak?
Madam Chair-
And it's coming from Esperanza?
Via Representative Jim Trujillo to us.
Okay. And since this is in my district, I mean, you know, I feel like if we're helping homelessness, but once again, this is not something that's on our ICIP list.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hansen, none of these four are on our ICIP list.
Okay.
Commissioner Moreno, oh-
Madam Chair, so that's all keep in mind. And Manager Miller can correct me if I'm wrong. Through different administrations throughout the ICIP process, Department of Finance and Administration, Governor Richardson, Governor Martinez, some governors required it to be on the ICIP plan in order for them to sign off if the bill ever got to hers or his desk. Some governors required it, some governors didn't. The last governor, Governor Martinez, said if that, any of these projects that come to my desk, and they're not on that plan, I'm not gonna sign off on them. And so the plan can be amended from time to time. And so we're in this- We're in the middle of a new administration, so I don't know if anybody out there knows what the new administration is gonna require, whether it be on the plan or not on the plan. I certainly understand what Mr. Flores is concerned in as regarding if the county doesn't own the dirt building. It's hard for us to actually control or to actually create some sort of an agreement out there as to how we actually monitor, oversee the procurement or the property management. So the Esperanza property, is this actually the one for on Rafina Road, which is actually owned by the county? Or is just the one on Aguafria? Because the one on Rafina is actually the administration- administrative component of Esperanza Shelter. So we do own the walls, the walls, et cetera, the dirt there. So if this is for the shelter itself, then that's a little bit more difficult.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Garcia, it's for both. It's for the administration building and the residential center.
And just for the record, Commissioner Moreno was actually next in line, so I'd appreciate the process. Commissioner Moreno?
Okay. Well, I don't wanna get in a jam again where we have a building that we can't modify in the Easter Seals building, for example. I know it's not on this, or maybe it is.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Moreno, the Easter Seals, El Mirador, is on this for a new building. I was referencing a allocation through capital outlay a few years ago for technology equipment for various facilities, not just in Santa Fe County. So this request today is for a greenhouse, a plan, design, and construct a greenhouse.
Well, I'll cut my comments short. We come upon the legislative session, and all the shiny objects that are floating in the air, and we're not Santa Claus. And I really kind of feel resentful about that. Because, I mean, they may be good intentioned, but right now, at this stage of this session, I think it's too late to be entertaining new projects that just come up on the doorstep of the legislature.
So, in partial, in addition, response to Commissioner Garcia, I don't think it's explicitly- It has impact on us what the governor requires, if they require to be on the ICIP or not. The issue for us, and I have to agree with Commissioner Moreno and Commissioner Hansen, is whether we've talked about them and given fair consideration in a process, you know, where we set priorities on what we think we would want to be requesting state, you know, capital outlay support for. And so these are- This just sort of short-circuits the process, and no process is completely fair. So, you know, some people might think that there's nothing magic about the fact that we talked about it on the ICIP before. But on the other hand, you know, we are trying to have some sort of process that allows them to be considered together. And we can get some of these projects on the ICIP for future consideration. Commissioner Royball?
I just wanna recognize that we- As it's been stated, we do have a process that we follow that, you know, there's not any of the projects that I do have on my ICIP list right now that I would push back and have take precedence- or have this one take precedence over those projects at this point. But it is something I definitely wanna work with the community with to get them on the ICIP list and possibly look at even expanding that type- that infrastructure, so it serves more people in that community. So, you know, although, like I said, I wanna support this effort or their request, at the same time, I know that there's a process and that we can't push anybody else back in the line, so I wouldn't change any of the priorities that I did, that we have established right now, as everybody's waited for some time and had these requests in for a while already. So that's basically how I feel at this point, is we need to make sure that we are not, you know, pushing back a different project for other ones if it doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
I'd just like to say, last word, I'm okay amending the ICIP plan, especially if it's a county-owned facility or if it's a quasi-judicial government entity, such as the Madrid Water Co-op, which they're asking the county for a little assistance and assisting, which that capital outlay money can go to them. If the capital outlay money can go to Esperanza, and the county does own that facility, I'm okay amending the ICIP plan for those types of projects.
Yes, I would agree with that all of these that can be- we can do on the next go-around, the amendment of ICIP. Commissioner Royball, did you, I hear you?
And also, it's me, also really quick is, you know, we can give a letter to the state representative or state senator and say, you know, we can amend our ICIP plan to include your project. Just keep in mind, the county, however, the county may or may not be able to create an agreement, representative or senator. So it's, if you wanna give some money to this type of project, that's great, but just to let you know, you're not guaranteed to bring a project- we're not guaranteed to bring that project forward just 'cause you appropriated funding to it.
So I recognize the dilemma that we are in, in the fact that we want- We want- We have a list, an ICIP list, that we have set out. And we have a legislature who supposedly has a tremendous amount of money. And so, of course, we're gonna get more requests because people see that there's all this money this year, and so therefore, they're asking for more help. You know, I'm sympathetic to Esperanza because, you know, it's helping homeless women, people who are struggling. At the same time, you know, I'm also really want the money for the Aguafria sewers, which has been on the docket for a long time and is more difficult to get. The Esperanza might be a little more sexy, and I don't know. You know, it's hard to judge what the legislature wants to do. Today in the paper, the city was told to aim high for legislative funding requests. So, you know, what does that mean? Where are we at? Can we just throw everything on the book and think, oh, we're gonna get everything funded? I don't know. I mean, you know, Tony, you're our lobbyist, you know, county manager.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hansen, we put in $10.3 million in capital outlay requests. That's what our total package of the priorities that this Board decided upon were submitted to the delegation. $10.3 million. Not including these four projects, and not including the two previous projects the Board gave me direction on the 8th of January. So, Mr. Garcia is correct. The delegation members in their own- have their own prerogative. They could put in a request. They could list it on it, and then we would have to come back to us and determine whether we could be fiscal agent or not. I mean, that is the reality of capital outlay. I think my boss had something to say.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is really difficult 'cause if we get another four or five, which we're likely to do, and they all did get funded, we don't have the capacity to actually do these projects on top of the fact that one of the requirements from DFA when they certify for it is we have to show control of the site. We have to own it. And we don't own these. There's some we do, and if it's one that we actually do own, and there's improvements to it, or if it's one that we wanna own, but I don't really know how we would own a greenhouse on El Mirador property. So the problem with these is- And then it's a wasted appropriation. As Commissioner Moreno said, it's a bunch of appropriations tied up that can't be spent. And I think they're, at some point, it's incumbent upon us- I know nobody wants to be the bad guy and say no, but it's incumbent upon us to- And maybe you have them all come to the next BCC meeting and present to you when we analyze whether we could even actually be their fiscal agent for, you know, for the project that they're asking for funding for. Whether it would violate anti-donation, so that we can just flat-out tell the legislator, we can't be that fiscal agent because we don't see- They've come to us, they've presented, and of the ones that maybe we could be, you pick the top two or three to say, but at some point, we need to actually put it back to the legislators, we can't accept these funds. And if it gets appropriated and it gets signed off by the governor, we're likely going to never be able to answer, just like we couldn't with the IT equipment. We will never be able to answer the questionnaire from DFA that we can accept it. So it will sit, and sit, and sit. I don't know, but I think at some point, you know, everybody wants to say, oh, yeah, that's a good cause, that's a good cause. That is the problem. And that's the problem with the violation of the Anti-Donation Act, or it says, no matter how good the cause, you can't contribute money to- you can't donate to a nonprofit entity or a non-governmental entity. So somewhere, I think it's- It is our responsibility to communicate to the legislators in our delegation that we don't think, if we really don't think on particular ones there is a way for us to be a fiscal agent for them, that we don't think we can. So we don't wanna mislead you that we would be able to accept this appropriation if it made it all the way through the process. And so somewhere, I think that we need to do that. And then going forward after this session, I think maybe we should say, you know, not just as part of our ICIP process, hey, if you're planning on going to the legislature next year and you want us to be your fiscal agent, you need to get approved in this process. And you need to get on it. And we don't throw everything under the sun onto the ICIP, but only approve those that we can truly manage. And that we are within our wheelhouse of staff, and don't negate all the projects that you already have put as your priorities. Because the way this is going this session, we'll have 10 to 15 appropriations that a good percentage of them, we can't spend. And if we could, they will go in front of what you- you already voted on as your priority. So I think we- I do think, rather than just saying yes to everything, we need to actually find some process to try to communicate back to our legislators what we believe we can actually accommodate.
I actually think that those are two great points, including the one of adding review to the ICIP having to do with, you know, whether we can actually accept certain projects during the year before the legislature.
Turn on your mic.
Thank you, sorry. Commissioner Garcia?
Just really quick, I think every project is beautiful, whether you have a sewer system that actually cleans up the environment, whether you're helping El Mirador, which is actually for the mentally challenged individuals, or Esperanza Shelter, which is great. So I think they're all great projects. Then we should just call for the question. Let's move on.
Yes, I'm not sure that this is a vote. This is a direction to staff, so-
Correct, this is not an action item. I'm looking for direction on each of the four requests.
So, Mr. Flores, Madam Chair, what kind of direction do you want us to? Do you want us to go down each one of them and say yes, no, and the majority?
Yes. So the first one up was the Madrid Water Consumers Association's fire protection line, and additional-
To be honest, I think we can- This is an all or nothing.
Okay. I'll defer to the Chair.
I mean, I don't think any one of these fall out of the discussion that we have had. I don't think any one of them stands apart from things needing, you know, to be on the ICIP. ICIP, we need to be assured that we can actually, for other projects, that we can actually act as fiscal agent. So, I assume we can just go straight down the row here and get everybody's input. Commissioner Hansen?
So, I believe that you did say that Esperanza was a county facility.
One of the facilities, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hansen, is ours, one of them is not. The administrative facility is county-owned, the residential facility is not county-owned, this equipment would go into both facilities.
And none of them are on the ICIP?
And, so, you know, I'm struggling, I think that things need to be on the ICIP, I think we need to have that mechanism because that's how we have worked and it's a logical process. I'm also reading this, you know, newspaper report where, you know, the city is asking for 16 million, you know, in funds and, you know, they're being told to aim high. So, you know, what we need to do is maybe we need to do a better job of educating the public out there of what they can come forward and when we do the ICIP list, I don't mean to be so long-winded, but it's a struggle for me. I feel like, no, I don't want to support things that are not on the ICIP list, and yes, I want to help the community because my heart says that, you know, we need these things, so that's kind of where I'm at.
I take that as being we need to improve, we want to expand and improve the ICIP outreach and the projects need to be on the ICIP. Commissioner Moreno?
I can, I can support that. I think it's too late for this session. There's no, there's no quick fix, but I will insist on criteria, any documentation that can be supported that, that shows that it can be built without violating to the anti-donation clause, and that would be my position.
Madam Chair.
Now, Commissioner, we're going to go down the line, Commissioner Royball?
I think right now, I do feel that we do have a process of finding, of identifying projects and putting them on our ICIP list, and I think it's important that, you know, we do have projects that we've identified as taking priority and it's very hard to add these additional projects here at the end, I'm very, it's a very difficult decision because we want to be understanding to the needs of our constituents in the different areas, and I know I have one request in my district, and so it's difficult, but at the same time, I really feel that we need to follow the process and not bump anybody out of line, so we need, I'd like to work with these individuals so we can get them on the ICIP list for next year.
Excellent. Commissioner Garcia?
Madam Chair. Mr. Flores, there's your direction, and I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that moves us along to, I'm not sure what it moves us along to.
So, CDBG.
I know, I'm looking for the thing, I know we're on CDBG. So, we're on the presentation of the Community Development Block Grant. Mr. Olson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Paul Olsson, Planning Division. The New Mexico Department of Finance Administration has opened its process for 2019 CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, funding. It is held, it is open through the local government division and the Community Development Bureau. The funds are passed through the DFA from the federal government and they're intended to benefit persons of low and moderate income. One type of grant is infrastructure grants, they are distributed statewide on a competitive basis. DFA estimates approximately $10 million will be available for infrastructure grants this year in 2019. Infrastructure applications are limited to a maximum of $500,000 per project if it does not have a certified cost estimate, or $750,000 per project with a certified cost estimate. The county is able to apply for one infrastructure project. There is also applications for planning grants, but they have a limit of $50,000. Additionally, the state has a set-aside fund totaling $500,000 currently for economic development projects. We are currently completing one CDBG project that was through a set-aside for affordable housing, and that was the roofing project that was approved by the board last year. We have been approached by several entities throughout the community to investigate whether the county would be interested in supporting an application for a community, an infrastructure grant, as well as for an economic development grant. So, the county at this time could apply for a new infrastructure grant and an economic development grant simultaneously. And we have checked with DFA, they would be working with us. We've also checked with Affordable Housing, they feel that the roofing project will be, we've checked with DFA, they have confirmed that we can apply for both infrastructure and economic development. We've confirmed with Affordable Housing Group that their roofing project is wrapping up, so there is an opportunity to apply for both these. I stand before you today to ask if the board would like to direct staff to proceed with a process, it's an open public process per CDBG, federal HUD rules and DFA rules, to have an open and transparent process for the project's selection. That would require a minimum of three public hearings before the board, one to present projects, one to select a, one or more projects, and a third meeting then to confirm the selection. So, if that's the direction of the board, we would come back to you on February 12th for the first of those three public hearings.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia?
I would like to, if there's no concerns, I'd give staff that direction to move forward with what your action request is, and just keep in mind, if you have any potential projects out there, that project has to be on the ICIP plan in order to get points through DFA. Thank you.
Second. I'm okay with that direction.
I'd like to have the presenters be sure and present and that we get a full complement of projects to be able to choose from. But I also want to make sure that we are able to get money for our roofs on the Santa Fe County Housing Authority, so we can finish that project.
Commissioner Moreno, did you have some? I actually had a question, is the schedule of public hearings and the schedule on the front page of, you know, the application process, I'm missing something. So, you have CDBG hearings like February 26th, the application deadline is, so that application deadline, these are hearings for the county to select which one it's going to put forward, and then the application deadline's in June?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just wanting to make sure.
And the February dates are not, that, those are our, those are the most nearest dates that we could put this up in front of you, so that's how it's lined up. After today, these are the next three meetings that we could bring something to you, that would allow, if there was a project selected, some time to actually develop the application and get it ready by June.
Right. And then, we would open this process going with the potential for both applications?
Yes, and I should clarify too, that the infrastructure project is due on June 21st. Economic development projects do not have the same timeframe. They have very similar requirements, but they're not under a time constraint of getting it in the queue for the statewide competitive grant process.
They essentially have no deadline then?
Correct.
Okay, good to know. Well, I would certainly, it sounds like the board is, concurs that we should give you direction to open this process. And, yes, Commissioner Hansen?
What type of projects are available for economic development since they have put this as a open category?
I can't tell you off the top of my head every type of project, but I know they're targeted to have hiring of low to moderate income employees, so it's job generation, and there's a ratio that I think one job per every $50,000 in infrastructure has to be created, it's either 50 or 35. So, if I had a $500,000 grant, I'd have to create 10 jobs, and they would have to be open and eligible for low to moderate income individuals to apply for those jobs, and I think 51% of the hires would have to be in low to moderate income.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any further inputs?
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have a presentation on the auditor. Technically, we have a presentation from the auditor.
Good evening, Erica Thomas, Budget Administrator. I just wanted to hand it over actually to Yvonne Nareda, our Financial and Reporting Manager, and Steve Montoya from REDW, our auditor.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the Commissioners. Steve, Montoya and I are here to present to you the 2018 audited comprehensive financial, comprehensive annual financial report. First, I would like to thank the finance staff for all the hard work that they put in to help us make sure that we got the audit done. I'd also like to thank the county, the county manager's office, as well as the board members for their support, and I begrudgingly want to thank the auditors for putting us through the wringer this year, it was a tough year. They had a lot of questions, we had some problems, but we have a really good staff who was able to buckle down and to get things taken care of and to be able to get that audit done before the December 1st deadline. I'll go ahead and pass it on to Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Madam Chair, members of the committee, let me make sure I have this set right. Well, it's great to be here tonight, so, good evening, thank you Erica for introducing us. So, the purpose of why I'm here today is to just provide a brief overview of the results of our audit of the Santa Fe County's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, as Yvonne said. Yeah, we definitely had a lot of questions and went through a thorough audit with the county this year, and, but we were able to, you know, issue a clean, unmodified opinion. And so, I'll just go through kind of the major steps, can you, you still hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, 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 thank you.
That we had a clean outcome, that's what he's happy about.
So, the, so we held an exit conference with the Audit Committee of the Board of County Commissioners and also with County Management, that was held on November 28th of 2018. The CAFER was then submitted to the State Auditor on December 3rd, which was in compliance with the deadline established by the State Auditor, and being that the first fell on the weekend. The State Auditor reviewed the CAFER and released the CAFER on December 24th, 2018, so right before Christmas. The county's single audit report was submitted and accepted by the Federal Audit Clearing House on January 14th, 2019. And so, all reports have been submitted. As far as our audit, you know, I just wanted to kind of give a brief overview of the different parts of our audit, similar to how I presented last year, there's three parts to our audit. The first part of our audit is the audit of the financial statements, and so that's the first phase of the audit. And what we're doing is we're auditing the numbers, you know, making sure that the notes, the note disclosures and the financial statements are accurate and that they're materially correct. We also are looking at the supplementary information, the schedules, and making sure all required components are in the CAFER. So, again, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is, you know, as I said, a clean opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that we can provide as part of our financial audit. So, part two of our audit is to test the internal controls of financial reporting. And again, when we're testing controls, we're looking at the controls over financial reporting, so not necessarily controls over operations, although sometimes that overlaps. But really, the objective is to look at the internal controls over the financial reporting, also to look over internal controls over compliance with laws and regulations that could pose, you know, present a risk of material misstatement. And so, when we come out, we, you know, as part of our planning phase, we'll go ahead and, you know, perform tests of controls, we'll do observations, we'll do inquiries, you know, obtain resolutions, go through the minutes, and we'll look to see, really what we're looking for is if are there any risks to the financial statements that we need to redesign our audit procedures, or may make, design our audit procedures to address those types of risks. And so, as part of our internal control assessments, if we find any deficiencies in internal controls, we'll report, we have to make a determination on how those are reported. And really, there's three levels. One, a control deficiency could be a material weakness, which is the highest level, then there's a significant deficiency, which is in the middle, and then there's an other comment, which is basically, it's a control matter, but it's not significant enough to warrant the attention of those charged with governance. But, so as far as our report, we didn't have any material weaknesses in this year's audit, so we didn't identify any material weaknesses. We did however have two significant deficiencies. One was for accounts payable cutoff, so basically, we found two invoices that hadn't, that should have been recorded to fiscal year 2018, but were recorded to fiscal year 2019. And so, the other one that we had was for account, timely and accurate account reconciliations. And this is where we had, there was reconciliations through our audit that required corrections after going over it with management, you know, one of them was like the cash reconciliations, there was items there that, where the schedule wasn't matching up to the GL, and so, you know, we went over those with management, management looked at them, them and their team, and they corrected the schedules, they made any correcting journal entries that needed to be posted to get the financials accurate. And so, ultimately, the issues were resolved, but that was just, since it was done through the audit process, we have to report it. So then, the other part of our audit is the compliance audit. And the, as, for our compliance audit, there's two components, one is the federal compliance and then one's the state auditor compliance. For the federal compliance, we had, this is our audit over the federal awards, which is also known as the single audit. We tested one major program this year, which was the Section 8 Housing Choice Vouchers Program, and that was basically a $2 million of expenditures in fiscal year 2018, out of the total federal expenditures was 3.3 million. And so, we tested the 2 million expenditures that were, of federal awards. And for our, the results of that is we had one instance of non-compliance, which was for reporting compliance, and that was basically that the unaudited financial statements weren't submitted over to HUD by August, I believe, August 31st. And then, with that, we had two internal control deficiencies. One was for reporting, that there was a control deficiency that the report didn't get submitted to HUD. And then, the other control deficiency was for payroll controls, where we found one out of 25 items that the payroll timesheet had been incorrectly entered into the system. And so, again, that one instance was corrected and the payroll was corrected, but since it was found during the audit, we reported it. And so, as far as the prior year single audit findings, so we do also a follow-up on the prior year findings. And both of those findings were resolved. So, management, you know, was able to correct those findings and we didn't have those findings in fiscal year 2018. And so, for the State Audit Compliance, for the State Audit Rule Compliance, we had five OSA findings this year. And I know Stephanie had provided a memorandum to you, kind of listing out all of those. And we could go into details if you would like to go into any of those. But basically, the five OSA findings was, one was for cash receipts, that there was a deposit that wasn't made within the 24 hours with it, before the next, close of the next business day. We had one for service under contracts, an OSA notification of fixed asset disposition. So, and then collateralization, and then also for expenditures in excess of budget. As far as the status of prior year findings, we found, both of those were resolved for the State Audit Rule findings that we reported in FY 2017. So, that was for travel and approval of contracts. That was not an issue in FY 18. And so, that's a brief summary of our audit results. Again, we had reported this in real detail with the Audit Committee, but I open this up to any questions that you may have about the audit results.
Thank you very much. So, Commissioners, are there any questions you have about the audit results? Commissioner Hansen.
Thank you. I kind of consider this the state of the county. How are we? We're good. It looks, I mean, it looks like in many ways. So, we didn't have that many findings that were like, the things that were misplaced or out of order, we fixed and we corrected. So, that's all good. When I was reading the summary, the introduction, I just had one question because it states in here, I'm on the reporting entities and services, and I'm on the third paragraph, and I'm on the one, two, like, third line from the bottom. And it says, "A regional planning authority created by the City of Santa Fe and the Santa Fe County." So, there's a whole kind of, the county provides the following services. It starts, actually, one, two, three, the fourth line down from the third paragraph. And then, you know, it says all the things that we provide. But I just want to point out that as much as I would love this regional planning authority to exist and to work and to function, it hasn't met since 2011. And so, even though it's created and it might still be on the books because the JPA is still on the books, I'm on page four, reporting entities and its services. Third paragraph, the line starts, one, two, three. "The county provides the following services." All the services are fantastic that we provide. I think it's good for the public to know all of these things that we do. But then it goes, "A regional planning authority." I'm trying to get the county manager in the same place. And did everybody else see where I am?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well. But I'm just, I just want to state that, for the record, you know, I would like us to have a regional planning authority, and that would make me really happy. I would like us to have a regional water authority. But, you know, those things do not exist at the moment. And so, even, and it is in this, and so, since I consider this a state of the county, and since we haven't had a regional planning authority since 2011, I think it might be inappropriate for it to even be here. But that's just, that's the only comment that I have. I did go through a lot of the things, not that I, I appreciate all the incredibly hard work that Yvonne has done on this, and I want to thank you from, really, because this is difficult work. And I really am grateful to all of your dedication and finding all these little things and these minute numbers that, you know, I would certainly miss. So, and Erica also, and of course Stephanie. We're sorry that Stephanie has left us, but you're not going to leave us. Thank you. We don't want to lose you. I really appreciate you, and I appreciate the auditor's hard work, and I appreciate the meetings that we've had. So, and I believe that Stephanie wrote this anyhow. So, I just was pointing that out, that that was kind of one of the things that I caught. That it's, I flagged it because I want so much for there to be a regional planning authority.
Thank you, Commissioner Hansen.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions? Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much for doing the presentation and all the work. And I did, I'm glad Commissioner Hansen mentioned it. I did get a lot of feedback about the incredible job our staff did and calling out especially Yvonne, and I think she deserves the recognition from the bench for that. So, thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, as well as the entire finance department, actually, because they all work as a team over there, and so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We are lucky to have a really wonderful finance department.
Yep, and thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to really express that as well, is that it's been really, really enjoyable working with Yvonne. I know I love her personality, and she gives us some little quick remarks and stuff, but it's great, and we like it. And yeah, this is a big report. I mean, it's three, over 300 pages and a lot of details. And so, it's definitely appreciated, all the effort that she puts into that and helping us with the audit to run smoothly.
And definitively, it's a great finance department that hangs together, has great leadership. And we're very lucky to have that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Speaking of the finance department, we're staying with the finance department to get a presentation on the budget process.
Good afternoon, good evening. So, the PowerPoint presentation, oh, that's fine. It's in your packets, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
This is what I presented to the departments during their mid-year hearings. This changed a little bit over the couple of years. We used to do a big presentation in here to all the departments, but I feel like it's more intimate when we're meeting with each department and presenting the budget kickoff and instructions. So, within the PowerPoint, we give them guidance how to prepare their budgets, their operating budgets. We provide deadlines and a timeline for the FY 2020 budget season. And new this year, we're saving tons of paper. We're doing a paperless budget entry process this year. And I'm hoping to streamline that as we move forward. This is the first year, so anticipate we'll have to work a little bit through the process, but it won't hamper the outcome of the budget. It's just in the entry portion. So, if you go to page two, I'm just going to do a summary. This is, like I said, what we present to the departments. So, the budget, our direction is to maintain a flat budget. And some exceptions to that are contractual increases, which naturally happen, utility increases, any one-time purchases they may have in maintenance items. So, those are things that may increase their budget. Within contractual increases, we just remind them to review their contracts. Sometimes there's an escalator in the contract. Look at their prior year expenses versus their current year expenses to make sure we're expending them in the correct year as we just went through the audit and had an audit finding and expending in the correct year. So, we're all trying to work together. So, I'm on page two. If we move on to page three, this is our timeline summarized. We opened our capital database and released budget documents. And what the budget documents are is they aid the departments in filling out their annual budget. It has the line item expenditures. It has travel requests. It has contractual listings. So, we opened that on November 20th, so they have plenty of time to start planning and preparing. We just concluded our mid-year review and budget kickoff last week on November, I'm sorry, January 23rd. Today, we had the paperless budget entry training at HR. I did release the instructions prior, and I was really excited that about 90% of them tried it before they even got there. And so, that concluded today. Our capital database, where all the capital requests are entered, will be closed on January 31st. So, this is fixed assets, capital and maintenance requests. We also have FTE requests in there. Concluding that, we meet in small groups depending on, and I'll go over this in the next slide, depending on the type of request. The FTE, fixed asset, maintenance and capital groups will meet between February 4th through 15th to ensure the entry into the database is correct, the funding source is correct. So, we just make sure that it's cohesive and it makes sense before we present it. The budget requests are due to our budget office on February 22nd. So, in prior years, they'd bring us these big old binders and we'd have to sort through them and then enter, they will already be entered in the system. So, basically, what will happen is they'll be able to run reports, but their access will be cut off to make any changes after that time. We anticipate having our budget hearings between March 1st and March 15th. So, the finance department, along with the county manager's office, meets with each department and looks through their requests, asks questions, and just vet through the process with them. We anticipate having a capital planning study session or strategic planning session with the board the last two weeks in March, and I'll go through that a little more in detail. And then, hopefully, we can have some budget study sessions with the board the morning of April 9th and 23rd. We're trying to get our interim budget as close to our final budget because DFA shifted the reporting mechanism. And so, everything after interim budget is manually entered by me. And so, if we can get as close to a final budget in our interim budget, it won't, there's less room for error, and it will provide a cleaner budget rollover. So, the BCC will approve the interim budget, hopefully, on May 28th. And it's due May 31st, so it's an upload that I have to do by May 31st. And any changes between May 31st and June 25th, which would be the approval of the final budget, will be changed, and then I submit the final budget to DFA on July 31st. That's just a, I know it's a lot, but kind of my life for the next couple of months. Okay, so the budget request entry and hearing, the FY 2020 budget is already open in our enterprise system, so they're welcome to enter into the system. The training I did today just provided the requirements that we have from our office as far as detail that's required from us, backup, like if you're going on travel, how much will it cost? Where are you going? How is this going to add value to the county? The detailed requirements are contractual detail, expenses over $10,000, one-time expenditures, travel detail and utility detail. Those tend to be the highest dollar requests, other than salaries and benefits. And I am just reminding departments, you guys, we just went through the audit and there was one finding matching current year expenditures to current year expenses to current year budget. So, we're really working together as a team to make, to ensure that the departments understand that that's the process we want to take. And our ultimate goal is to incorporate the items on the strategic plan into the budget entry. So, I gave guidance on that today, how we're going to incorporate that. So, on page five, capital, fixed asset, maintenance and FTE requests, as I stated earlier, entered into a database. I believe this is our fourth year? Fourth year using the database. It kind of, the beauty of it is, they were always paper requests. And this way, it allows it to summarize in a nice reporting format to submit so we can vet through those requests. So, as it stands now, the requests for FTEs will be reviewed by HR initially, before they're presented to the board. IT will review the IT requests. We'll have a fixed asset group. So, that's like computers, equipment, vehicles, those type of things. We'll have a small group that just vets those and ensuring the funding and the requests are complete. We'll have building maintenance requests, review all the building maintenance requests. And along with the county manager's office, look and vet through the capital requests before our strategic capital planning session. So, on page six, it's just a summary. We're requesting a flat budget other than the variables that I presented earlier. I'm asking them to review prior year actual expenditures to ensure we're not overbudgeting. We're doing a paperless budget submittal. FTE requests, fixed asset, IT and maintenance requests will be entered into the database and capital. I ask them to be mindful of the deadlines. Our year-end deadline memo will go out, which correlates with our budget deadlines. And all the forms I provide on SharePoint, so they can get them at any time. They can call us, of course, but they're available at any time. And the last page is just our contacts for the departments. Do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, before, I just want to clarify the difference between capital requests and capital projects. You see capital requests throughout here during our regular budget process for annual budget. We do the capital requests for fixed assets, large building maintenance projects, vehicles. All those are capital relative to how they're accounted for in our accounting system as well as in the budget in particular, 8,000 category line items. That is not the same as the capital projects, which we've done, you know, our ICIP, and we do that process throughout the summer. But if you recall, last year when we did the strategic planning, we kind of said, "Let's put the capital projects to the side." One, because we didn't have any money to work with, but also, we didn't want to get bogged down in our strategic plan with trying to determine capital projects. We want to get our actual, I'll call more of an operating strategic plan in place. But what I'd like to do is, and Erica mentioned it in the slide, where we had kind of a timeline, was having a capital planning study session with the BCC. That one is the one that I'm referring to as a capital projects and looking at kind of tying our strategic plan and getting our capital projects that we already have either budgeted or that we've been working on, where we need to look at those and say, "Okay, is this project going to move forward, not move forward?" If it's not going to move forward for a variety of reasons, want to bring it to the board to discuss whether we move that funding to a different project. Or what's an option? What's something else we could do? And go through all of that, so kind of what I'll call a capital projects cleanup. And then, then also get your priorities for going forward over the next five years. And for that then to be tied with our strategic planning process. And then, that would also inform our ICIP process with knowing what we currently have as priorities. When we go out to the public with the ICIP, we say, "This is what the board already has and where they're planning, the county's direction in capital projects." And then have that hearing process get feedback on what we already have in addition to other things that community members want to have included in our capital planning. So, I just wanted to distinguish those two things in this and that, so that, that's what that capital planning is, separate from our fixed assets and IT purchases and that type of thing. of thing.
That makes sense. I appreciate it. Do you have, yes?
I was just gonna piggyback off of what Catherine was saying. Actually, it was almost identical. During the budget planning season, we'll hold the budget strategic, I'm sorry, capital strategic planning session. Basically, we can, we'll update our resources or sources, funding sources in conjunction with capital planning. So maybe we can see what we have over the next five years, short and long-range planning. And it gives you a better picture of what we have in the, for the immediate need and long-term needs. Our goal is just to have a clear path or an understanding what's available to the county now. So I'm really excited because we didn't get to do that last year. And I think it'll be really good for the board, but also for our staff to go through those capital projects together.
That's great. Any further questions on this?
No, thank you, Erica. Sounds great. You did a great job. Thank you.
So next, we have an update on something I'm pretty happy to hear we're moving forward on, the e-agenda project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, we've been working through the process of doing electronic agenda, electronic packets for not only this board, but all the boards and committees that you sit on or that we have for the county. We put out an LOI, letter of interest for potential firms to be able to respond back to us on their solutions for e-agenda. Based upon that, we've selected a company. We are currently working through the informational process of business processing or identifying our business processes, at least for the Board of County Commission. The anticipated go-live date is the last meeting in April. That meeting, we will have both a paper packet, which is this voluminous binder, and also the e-packet. After that meeting, we'll be strictly on an e-packet basis. Since this is an e-agenda, an e-agenda management tool, we were providing the solutions, the technology solutions for each of the commissioners, the county manager, the clerk, the attorney, so that you're able to see the agendas and those items, packet materials on your screens rather than having to flip through the packet. This will also allow us to change things on the fly. For instance, today, we moved some things around from the commissioner's action items at two different times in the meeting, and we may not have given the public adequate notice to get here that we were moving things around. So this document will be live in real time so that if we move something, we being the board, move something on the agenda, we can at that same time move it on the electronic agenda that'll be available on our web. So there are some advantages of having the e-agenda. One of them is not printing ten of these. And also the ability to get public real-time information as it happens here. We can also record votes and be able to publish those quickly after the clerk has given her information. So we're excited about it. It is a little sluggish right now of getting going, but we do anticipate having it up and running the last meeting of April.
That sounds great. So the obvious question is, up and running in April sometime, is there going to be time to get training for everybody?
Yes.
That, to be able to use the hardware and software?
Yes. So when I say up and running, the first meeting that'll actually be live will be April, the last meeting in April. We'll be backing up the training sessions for the board and staff that do various committees and the county manager's office as the keeper of the flame, so to speak, when it comes to agenda management prior to that. So I anticipate us having a very hectic February and March, not only with the budget process, now a CDBG process, the legislative process, but also a new agenda process. So more to come.
Wow, that sounds great. Commissioner Moreno?
Tony?
Sir?
Are, is this system going to be able to talk to other agencies like SWAMA with their...
Only in the sense of us publishing or posting the agendas that we do for those outside entities. It doesn't have an interface for other entities to be able to do that. This is purely for the organizational structure of the county.
Just the...
Yeah. We would be able to post agendas as we do for other boards and committees, but not have the interaction where we can change agendas and do that thing as that particular board makes them. So that wouldn't happen as part of this rollout.
Okay.
We would all have to be on a similar platform or have an interface built into both sites.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Hansen?
So the city is able to do that, so we're not going to the same e-system that the city, I mean, because with our meetings, they're all on these tablets also.
This is a different system than the city of Santa Fe.
Okay, okay.
But I think it's a good question.
I don't have any attachment to their system.
Yeah, Commissioner, Madam Chair, Commissioner, that is an interesting thought though to see about the interface. I'm sure it'll cost us more money than we have and it'll take longer to do, but I think I can ask the question on if we're able to do it.
I guess some detailed questions might be good. Like I, the city system, I know they can bookmark and highlight things electronically, so we can too. So, great, thank you. Other questions? Well, I'm really pleased we're moving along with this. Thank you very much. It will save my
Thank you.
right shoulder from having to carry all this heavy stuff. So, we've done most of matters from county commissioners, but down to B to C, are there issues for many commissioners?
Madam Chair, I had one more thing under managers.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you very much, guys. We're on number six, discussion and scheduling of annual site visit.
So, Madam Chair Commissioners, last year, well, we're required by law to do an annual visit of our detention facilities and inspection and by the board. And last year, we did the adult facility, the last meeting in February, and we did the juvenile facility, I believe, the last meeting in March. I don't think we have to do it spot on the same month as we did it last year. We're just required to do it annually. I wouldn't want to wait too long into the year, but one of the things I was thinking because of the legislative session, because we have budget and all those special meetings or longer meetings for the budget, that maybe we push it to June, July timeframe and that we just do one morning, we go to adult and we go to juvenile instead of trying to, you know, to do it as one special meeting and do both facilities. So that would be a suggestion, and I'm open for feedback.
Okay, Commissioner Garcia?
Madam Chair, that's fine for me.
Any other comments?
So both.
Commissioner Moreno?
Maybe I missed something. The, we're gonna have two tours on two days?
No, sorry. Madam Chair, Commissioner Moreno, that's how we did it last year, and we did them before our regular BCC meeting. I would propose we just pick a special meeting sometime in May, June, July, one morning and do them both. And it not necessarily be the day that you have BCC. I just didn't want to add another special meeting or a super extended meeting when we already have, we're looking at trying to do the capital projects, strategic planning in March. We're looking at trying to do budget, special meetings in April. So I thought, let's push it out a little bit later, but combine them on one day and just do them all at once, whether it be on a BCC day or not. But for me to come back with some dates further out in the year and do them back-to-back on the same day so that we don't have to add two trips.
Commissioner Hansen?
I think doing it in June or July or sometime after the legislative session and after everything else that's going on is a great idea, and I support that. I don't know how, it takes time to go through these facilities. So if we're gonna start and we start around nine o'clock in the morning, we might go until one or two. I mean, you know, so we might need to take a break and, you know, have lunch or something like that. I don't know how you want to do that, but it does take time to go through these facilities.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hansen, I agree. That's why I was trying also not to try to put them on the same day as a commission meeting because I believe the last, when we did them, when we did them at the end of the month, you were kind of rushed to get, we started at like nine, barely got done by 12 to get back here and get to housing by one, and then you had your meeting. It made for a very long day. And I would just suggest we maybe not do that, but just have a special day. We do the tour, we try to do both of them, and you don't have to then follow up with an all-night-long meeting.
Commissioner Roybo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would concur with the decision that I feel on days when we have BCC and then we're gonna go tour a facility, especially if we do both, it's just too long of a day, plus we are rushing around. I would rather do a special meeting and go on tour both these facilities on the same day. So that would be my preference.
I would agree that doing it later and on one day sounds just grand. Commissioner Garcia?
Also, just to add to that, I think we should have lunch at the facility as well so we can see what the inmates eat.
Well, you can vote for that.
Let's see, let's see what they eat. That's, why not?
Madam Chair Commissioners, we have done that, and I have to say, I had a couple meals, and they're pretty good.
Yes, we have done.
We'll ask for a good one. What's the day they're having? The hamburgers or something?
I would be fine with that as well.
Yeah, okay. So are there further matters from the commissioners? Commissioner Hansen?
Yeah, so I have a number of items. So first, I'll start with, I have had a request from, from our city councillor Siglindell to please put a sign at our new, at our new county building. She would like a sign with a picture. That was her request because she feels like all these people are continually asking what is going on next to the convention center. And so she wants, she suggested at the corner of Catherine and Grant, I think that's right, and right next to where the, come out of the post office. I am just relaying that message. I do think it might be a good idea to have some kind of sign at least saying, this is Santa Fe County New Administration Building Under Progress or something like that. Then, all of you, I believe, have gotten an email today, but I did print you out hard copies. I am very, very concerned about this Waters of the U.S. rule that is about to be published by the federal government. And it is really going to impact if nothing has changed and the definitions are not revised. The Santa Fe River will basically lose all protection from, because there's 10 miles of ephemeral stream, and ephemeral will no longer be covered by the Clean Water Act and the EPA. And it is, it is really quite serious. And on the River Commission, we have been working really hard on this for the last couple of meetings. We had a special meeting. And this letter has been sent to the city council and it's being sent to the county commission. And I wanted to, even though you got it in, in the mail, I just wanted to bring, bring it up to, bring it up to your attention because I would like to, I will start working on a resolution that we make comments, or maybe Commissioner Hamilton and I can work on a letter together.
Be happy to.
To the EPA and to, to comment on this because once we get, if we don't comment, we will not have standing. And having standing with this proposed rule change is incredibly important. And so I want to, and I'm sure that Bruce would like, our county attorney would be interested in working on this with us also, since this is his specialty. And I hope I'm not overstepping my position, county manager, by asking. But I feel like we, we at the River Commission have worked very hard on this and had numerous special meetings. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because the rule should be published sometime in the next week or two, as long as the federal government remains open, it will be published. And then with that, I want to, since Commissioner Hanaya has left us, and he was always so good at recognizing people who had passed away. And there are a number of people in this last time span that have left us. And so I wanted to just mention some of those people. Tommy Hicks from Shadona, I don't know if any of you knew him, but when I first came here, Tommy ran Shadoni, and it was just this great environment. And he created a really incredible sculpture garden out there, and I always really admired him for that. And he has passed away. And then also, Lamos Coma, who was Peter, is Peter Comas's mother, who I've known for quite some time. And she owned the old patio cafe. She passed away in this last couple of weeks. And I just wanted to remember her also and remember the Comas family and Peter. And then, as Joseph Montoya mentioned, that somebody had passed away in one of our, he didn't pass away in our facilities, but this morning on Facebook, his brother, James Rutherford, posted that Rusty, Rusty Rutherford, who was known as Sombrero Man, many of you in the old days, if you remember him, he was always out there at Fiesta and everywhere with his flamboyant sombrero. And he also passed away. And then my, my last remaining aunt, who lived in Denmark, also passed away. And I was, you know, I, she was the end of the generation of my mother and my father, and I will miss her tremendously. And then last but not least is... Is councillor Harris's son passed away from an overdose of heroin or drugs. And his name is Andrew Glenn Harris. And I found this out from Mr. Harwood when I saw him recently, but this happened December 13th, and I don't think anyone knew. So I really wanted to send my condolences out to councillor Harris and his family. There is a memorial for him, for the, for his son on February 2nd. And I'm, my heart is just broken for him. I have personal experience, when I was very young, one of my cousins died from overdose of heroin before it was quite as common as it is today. And I don't know if it was heroin he did, die from overdose. I don't, I don't want to misrepresent anything. And so I, I don't know the details, but I do know that it is a really unfortunate thing. And I am so glad that we have joined the opioid lawsuit. And it makes it even more close to home when we lose someone who is part of our colleagues and extended family. And so I think, I think we should take a moment of silence for all of these people who have passed away and have left us and have enriched our community so much, and for all of their families, and remember them in that spirit of all the generosity that they gave to this community.
Just really quick on that note, if we're gonna take a moment of silence, I'd actually like to also, the passing of... like to also, the passing of former State Representative Kiki Saavedra, who was a very instrumental man in the last, what, 20, 30 years of the state legislature, and was the chairman of the Appropriations Committee, passed away, I believe, two days ago.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
I'd like to add a couple of names.
Yes, please.
In my district, in the community, we've had a couple of losses as well, and one's Amos Duran and Robert Luhon, so I'd like to add them to that moment of silence.
Thank you, thank you all for bringing these forward, we'd like to do a moment of Thank you very much.
Oh, I actually forgot one person, Cynthia Lee West, who many of you may have known, who was a lobbyist at the Roundhouse, she was my neighbor and part of the Casa Legra Neighborhood Association, and she also passed away.
She was respectfully added to our moment of silence.
Thank you.
Are there any other matters from other commissioners?
Yes.
Go ahead, okay. I did want to just mention that, you know, and thank the organizers of the, for the 28th Annual Hispano Music Award Ceremony, it was held in Espanola last weekend, and Commissioner Garcia and myself were invited to be presenters at this music award, and it was just really nice to see the culture and the music being kept alive, and, you know, just the celebration was really, really nice to be invited to, so it was something that we were really, or I was really proud to be a part of. And secondly, I'd like to also notice that, mention that I do have a constituent here in the audience, and I'm not sure if she is wanting to address the commission, but I know public comment has passed, but if you would entertain that, Chair Hamilton, I'd appreciate it, but if not, then I understand.
I have no problem if somebody has come out, I can open, if that's acceptable, I can open public comment, did somebody want to address the commission? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
I really appreciate that, Chair Hamilton, I know it's quite a drive, you know, 25, 30 minutes to come from Nambasa.
Exactly, how are you?
Fine, thank you, good evening, my name is Martha Trujillo, I reside on 39 El Calle Jonsito Road, thank you, Commissioner Royball. Actually, I was not sure where we were at on the agenda and what it actually meant, comments from the very last item that you have on the agenda, so I wasn't sure if that was going to be part of public comment, and so I was just gonna say from the back, well, if it's not something open to talk about, then I didn't need to come up, but the last item, is that what we're, is that where we're at now?
I reopen public comments, so anything you want to talk about, I'm not, Martha, I'm sorry to say, I didn't know which item you meant, but
Okay, well, I apologize.
You're free to talk about, you know, whatever you want to, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, so first of all, I'd like to thank our county clerk for the time that she gave to me a while back in reference to the convenience centers in voting, and I appreciate the fact that she took out the time to discuss and address the concerns that we had on those convenience centers, and I think that we agreed that there could be a potential plan change in the future, so I appreciate that. And also, wanted to bring up that we have a county office, it's a satellite office in the Pawnee area, and I had a concern during the general election that we were not able to hold political signs that period of voting, simply, the reason given was that there was a fear that if it got congested, too many people in the parking lot, then it would be a health and safety issue. With that said, I'm concerned that we do have a satellite office and that there is a concern that that, and that that may not be the most appropriate place to have a satellite office and hold elections or voting, that being a voting center. So, I just wanted to say that, and I'm more than happy to talk offline with our county clerk about that, but just interested in knowing if we could look at that satellite office and make sure that it is open, that everyone would have the ability to, even if it's a petition, that it would not be a health or safety issue in that area. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for coming out to make a comment, to talk about this. So, I assume there's nobody else from the public, so I'll go ahead and once again, close public comment, thank you for coming. So, I think Commissioner Garcia had something first, and then Commissioner Hanson?
I'd just like to bring some items up from the last meeting, actually, there's, it was probably my first time out of the gate, horse out of the gate, and there may or may not have been an agenda item that I actually probably didn't really fully understand, and if I actually kind of offended a few individuals possibly up here, just to let you know, I will think a little bit more before that happens again, it won't happen again, and so I just wanted to bring that forward. Also, in regards to the site at the sign that the counselor brought up, I think we just need to, maybe we can put a statue of Mr. Flota's out there.
I like that idea.
Actually, people would know what's going on there.
Boy, that's a deadpan reaction.
That's all I have.
Okay, so, we've been through all the commissioner, Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, I appreciate what you just said. I wanted to go to the informational items before we go to executive session.
Well, we're on matters from commissioners.
Oh, well, okay, I have something, okay, never mind, I'll wait.
Okay, so I'll close matters from commissioners, there are matters from other elected officials, yes.
Madam clerk?
Chair Hamilton, commissioners, thank you, I'd like, as you know, there is an upcoming election, so I wanted to give you and the public some information about that, and also know that we will be canvassing, we've been working with the public schools of Santa Fe Public School District to run this election, so here I go. The Santa Fe Public School District's special all-male ballot election day is March 5th, 2019. There will be no VCCs and/or polling places on election day. This is an all-male ballot special election. On February 5th, 2019, voter registration ends at 5:00 p.m., and ballots will be mailed out to all qualified registered voters in the Santa Fe Public School District. Each qualified elector who receives a ballot may cast their ballot and then return the voted ballot to the Santa Fe County Clerk's office in person or by mail pursuant to the instructions on the envelope from the county clerk by 7:00 p.m. on March 5th, 2019. It is not necessary to apply for an absentee ballot. All qualified registered voters in Santa Fe Public School District will receive a ballot by mail. For more information, contact the Santa Fe County Clerk's office at 505-986-6280, or visit the Santa Fe County Clerk's webpage on the Santa Fe County's website. I want to thank Tony and other county staff that have assisted us with regards to the resolutions you passed earlier to work on the issue of making sure that we get this election paid for and then reimbursed. The county manager will be negotiating with, on that issue, and we have been in communication, my staff especially, Steve Freskis, the Bureau of Elections Chief, with the school district. Thank you again from me and my staff.
Thank you. So, next on the agenda is matters from the county attorney, but before we do that, I'd like to ask if there are respect to the informational items, so staff can leave if there are any questions from the commissioners on the informational items, Commissioner Hanson?
On page, well, under Economic Development, second page, it says the Economic Development Division has worked on the following, it says staff attended a New Mexico IDEA annual meeting, New Mexico IDEA is an organization for economic development, I saw that we got a grant, but what happened at the IDEA meeting? And then, down the last one, it says staff evaluated and awarded $100,000 in event marketing funding for the city's occupational, occupation tax advisory board. So, what did we donate to? I mean, did we just donate to the general fund, or did we donate to specific events that happen at the city that we participate in, or?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hanson, that item is just that the economic development manager sits on the city's OTAB board, and so this was what the OTAB board did, which is like our LTAB, but it's within the city, so it wasn't something that our economic development staff did separately, they just did, they sat on that OTAB board.
And they donated $100,000.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hanson, it's not Santa Fe County money, it's lodgers tax, they call it occupational tax at the city, but they have, they award and they don't donate, they typically, they do applications for, just like our LTAB board does, for events that promote tourism in city of Santa Fe, and they have their criteria, we have ours, I don't know what this particular one is, but quite often for them, it's, they do RFPs or Notice of Funding Availability, they compete out tourism events that promote visitation into the city. So, I don't know what theirs are, but that's not our money.
Okay, so, it's just, so staff evaluated and awarded $100,000, $100,000 in event marketing, funding for city occupational tax board, so that's just a statement, not a
Madam Chair Commissioner, I think all he was saying is, he sits, Chris or our staff sits on the OTAB board.
And so, he's just reporting that
What the OTAB board did, not, that's not the LTAB board.
Okay.
He's just saying, they do similar to what we do, they have their advertising campaign, they have funding that they give to promote different events, and usually that's what it is, is pay-for-advertising of events that happen in the city of Santa Fe.
Okay.
Any other questions on informational items?
No, Madam Chair, I have several questions, but I will wait, just due to time, to bring them up at my standing with Manager Miller.
Thank you. So, we can go on to, and thank all the department heads for being here and staying, very much appreciated, and for the informational items. Matters from the county attorney, Mr. Frederick.
Madam Chair, we're requesting to go into executive session to discuss the five matters listed under Item 8A, 1 through 5, in accordance with the authorities listed in the same agenda item.
Thank you, can I have a motion?
I move we go into executive session to discuss the items that Mr. Frederick discussed.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can I have a, I saw, can I have a roll call?
Yes, Chair Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Royball?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
All five of you.
Thank you, we're in executive session, I expect it will be an hour, a bit more.